I'd like to welcome everybody to a regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with the secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Roll call, please.
Here.
Commissioner Corbin?
Here.
Commissioner Jagiello?
Here.
Commissioner Powers?
Here.
Commissioner Nolan?
Here.
Chair Zabilla?
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chester. My apologies, Vice Chair Jagiello.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Oh, and please note for the record that Commissioner Merka's absent.
Commissioner Nolan, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, please. [inaudible]
Okay, we're going to move on to public communications, which is the time set aside during Planning Commission meetings for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. I have no cards for public communications. Does anybody like to speak on something that's not agendized? Okay, then we are going to move on to our consent items. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the governing bodies and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no discussion of these items unless, before the governing body votes on the motion to adopt, specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. Our first consent item is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, February 1st, 2017.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 1st and February 15th.
For both?
Agreed.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Quilisi?
Yes.
Commissioner Corbin?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jagiello?
Yes.
Chair Zabilla?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to our disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Commissioner Quilisi?
Thank you. I have visited the site, no ex parte contacts.
I've visited both sites and had no ex parte contacts.
I've visited all sites and had no ex parte contact.
I also have visited all the sites and had no ex parte contacts.
I've visited both sites and had no ex parte contacts.
I visited both sites, 10-10 Fairview during Christmas.
Foothill.
Foothill, I'm sorry.
Foothill.
Foothill. I did have a conversation with the owner because I was up there during the holiday home look-in and actually was up there for hours, so I just got a tour of the property.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to our first public hearing item, which is design review permit, DRP 16-08, entry permit, T 16-36, for construction of a new single-family residence and tennis court, 10-10 Foothill Road, assessor's parcel 0200030060. General plan designation of the site is low-density residential LR, and the zoning classification of the site is single-family, low-density R01. A categorical exemption has been prepared pursuant to SEQA. Property owner applicant, Rameen Shamschiri, and I'd like to hear from staff, please.
Thank you. The applicant's request, as you stated, is for design review permit and tree permit to allow the construction of a 2,304 square foot, single-family, two-level home, a detached garage and gym, and a tennis court. Project includes grading and retaining walls related to the tennis court and driveway, and some construction will be within the drip line of existing oak trees. Subnote that currently there will be, and there's an existing abandoned swimming pool that is proposed to be demolished and replaced with an underground cistern for surface water drainage. There are proposed landscaping and draining improvements, including new oak trees, mitigation for the work underneath the oak trees proposed, some additional plantings, and some stormwater controls. The grading of this project will include about 2,253 cubic yards of cut and 50 cubic yards of fill. We make a note of that because that's a substantial amount. We'll have a considerable amount of truck trips to remove that dirt. So in the staff report before you tonight, there is the general regulations and the discussion of both the general plan and zoning consistency and the regulations as they relate to the R1, R01 zoning district, and we provide, as we always do, this project as it compares to the rules and regulations and whether it's consistent. I don't feel I need to read those into the record. We do always provide for you the design review jurisdiction and what we're looking for, the Planning Commission to look, and how we prepared the resolution for approval tonight, based on the findings as they are in Article 20. We provide a brief description of the architecture, and I know the applicant has a PowerPoint here tonight, he'll probably be doing more, so I'll make that rather brief. We provide its compliance with the solar access sections of the Ojai Municipal Code. We give another brief description of the amount of truck trips, between 150 and 220 truck trips, and removing the cut from the grading that will occur. Also, the setbacks in retaining wall and the trees and the tree permit. And with that, we just have the, there has been quite a number of due diligence done on the cultural resources for this project, including a pedestrian survey and test excavation of 19 auger holes. He is now consistent and has the standard conditions placed on this permit before you tonight. We do also offer for you his Neil Zach contract and historic resources, only as sources of information, as that's not really under your purview tonight. We will, we do indicate that he did get a work permit from the HPC, which was then appealed to the City Council and then subsequently approved. So with the action tonight, unless this is an appealed action also, this will be the last stop for this particular project, other than a building permit. And with that, we do note, though, that he's in, the applicant is in the process of trying to get sewer connected to this property, which is not currently served, and he has provided us with a letter that they can and will serve. We have a condition of approval on this project that he needs to get us a will, you know, an actual will-serv letter if he works out the details with the sewer, and I believe he has also a can and will-serv from the water purveyor. And with that, I'm open, oh, I should say that I have one correction to the conditions of approval that are contained in the resolution before you tonight, and I'm sorry that I don't have a written, I haven't provided you with a written correction, but at some point, we need to add a number in here that would say he needs to be compliant with MS4 permit if applicable. At this point, we're not sure, the MS4 for stormwater. We think that he is, at this point, in our understanding is that he's under the threshold that would require him to be compliant, but we want to make sure that he's aware that he may be, he may trigger something that would require an MS4 permit. So with that, that kind of concludes my presentation. I'm open for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Quilisi?
Thank you, Chair Zabilla. I may have missed it as you went through your staff report. Did you say there has been a PAH and/or a Phase 1?
Correct, I did, I did say that. He did, on page six of nine, he did an extended Phase 1.
I saw the requirement. I didn't know whether it had been completed.
Yes, he said that at the request of the applicant, an extended Phase 1 was conducted and provided to the city. The very top. The assessment focused on the proposed building footprints and surrounding area. The investigation included general background research and archival record search and a pedestrian survey and testing excavation of 19 auger holes. So he's done extensive cultural resources efforts.
Investigations, yes.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And I have one question for the city attorney. Since Ms. Wald has mentioned that there is another condition that needs to be added to the resolution, can we do that tonight, or do we have to direct staff to come back with a modified resolution, as has happened in many cases?
Given that the proposed change is an addition of one condition, that could be done tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? No, okay, then I'm going to public, open the public hearing and ask the, hear from the applicant.
All right. Yeah, is this just turned on?
That one go on?
I think it's, they're having some technical glitches, so.
Can you, can you give us an assist on the, you got it? Okay.
Well, I'll start.
That's the end of the stack.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think there's some, it's not coming up great for some reason. We were looking at it before, so you'll have to bear with us. But yeah, good evening. My name is Rameen Shamschiri, and I live at 1,000 Foothill Road in Ojai. You know, as you know, we're reviewing our submittal for 10-10 Foothill Road, which is the empty lot adjacent to the Libby House. It's on the north side of the property and runs from the western edge to the eastern edge. Currently, there's a driveway that runs through the lot, and there's also an abandoned pool from the 60s or 70s, and we wanted to demo the pool, as noted, and create a cistern. And essentially, on top of that, we'd bury it and put in a dog run. We also wanted to create some visitor parking on the northern edge that would be flanked by two structures that are L-shaped and adjoined by a common deck with one of the great existing oaks in the center of the deck. The structure that runs east-west would be considered the main residence on that lot, and it's, there's a living area, a kitchenette, a bathroom, and a bedroom. And then there'll be a subterranean level that would consist of a second bedroom, a second bathroom, and a screening room. The other structure runs north-south and would be a two-car garage along with an adjoining bathroom and gymnasium. Our intent is to use the current language of the existing structures to direct the design for the new additions. The scale, roof pitch, materials, and windows will all mimic the other structures on the property. It's a nod to the existing architecture, you had a more modern take on it. The larger structure is two stories, and seeing that nothing on the property is two stories, you know, we've, we decided to go through the added expense of burying one-story underground, so it didn't affect the visual landscape of the property. And then in the northeast corner, we wanted to build a tennis court. Again, we don't want to see that from the house necessarily, and we intend to plant it out with trees and bushes. There's not going to be any high fences on the long sides, and the retaining walls will all accent the rockwork throughout the property. And there'll be no lights, as we really want it to blend in to the landscape. So our intention really with the project is to enhance the property, but also to do it in a way that seems like the structures were always there or intended to be there. And, you know, I have the design package here that we can go through if you have any questions. I don't want to be redundant, because I think you've all seen the sets, so I'm happy to go through specific parts of it, and that's about it. Thank you very much for your consideration, and I can, not sure if this flips through, but yeah. And we have just images of the house as it is, is our kind of like inspiration images. And then this is the empty lot.
Empty but for the pool.
Yes, there's images of the pool. You can see, go through, but that's the, that's the old pool. And then this is where apparently it gets a little glitchy and slow, so that's the site plan. But I have renderings on the back end. I don't know if you got the renderings in your package.
I think so.
You have some elevations.
Yeah, no, I have renderings, I have here printed out, decent size, but for some reason, it's the, it might take a little while to shuffle through. Sorry, I intended to have this up on the screen, but it's better to come up.
Sure.
There's just some reference images of what we want to do for, you know, kind of the tennis court, as well as the glass and.
Yeah, yeah.
Have to be at the, at the end.
You could perhaps, that we pass around and.
Yeah, maybe the last, and then the rendering.
Okay, yeah.
I can try and shuffle through these, but yeah, so, oh, here we go. Working. There we go. So this is kind of like a rendering of it in the.
And what is it?
This is the upper floor of the house?
This is the upper floor of the, of the main house, yeah. So if you, I'll go back one, but these are, these are the reference images, kind of like how we want to do the court, and also the, you know, the, the structures. The, and these are the backsides. Oops. We just lost it. Okay.
There we are.
Yeah, so, but this, the glass and the, it's mostly on the backside that you don't see from the house. The front side will really mimic the house, so it'll look like it was, you know, always there.
You don't see much of the front side of the house from the street either.
No, you don't see much of it at all from the street. Trying to think if there's. I thought there was another one, but maybe I'm wrong.
Side facing the street.
So that's 2,304 square feet?
Microphone. Well, I would say that the, the two floors together are 20, yeah.
Okay.
The, the subterranean floor, you don't really notice, because most of it's underground.
So this is about 1,150?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Shamschiri at this time? I think maybe we'll call you back.
Okay.
But for right now.
Oh, I do have.
Hang on. Come back, I guess.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Powers has a question.
Is, is there any gray water system planned for this structure?
Yeah, that's essentially what we want to do with the old abandoned pool, is to create a cistern, which will be a gray water system.
Oh, gray water as well as storm water?
Storm water, yeah.
Okay.
So everything will go in there, and then we'll use that to water.
Yeah, I was aware of the storm water going in the cistern. I might have just missed it if it was in here that that, the home was going to have gray water.
Yeah, I know, we want to do both.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
This is a public hearing, so I don't believe I have any speaker's card on this matter, but if anybody would like to comment, anybody else on your team, Mr. Shamschiri, have anything to add?
Everybody's here. We're mostly.
Okay. We're not overflowing with questions here, I guess. So if there are no comments from, from the audience, then, and nobody else, do you have a question?
No.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back to the commission for comments. Commissioner Quilisi?
I, I think that we have, we have seen a considerable amount of detail of this proposal in the past. It doesn't look that different to me from the concept review that we held, and I think that it will be a worthy addition to the community. I'm in favor.
Commissioner Nolan?
I'm in agreement. I think it's very well detailed out. I love the sustainability factors, what they're doing with the water, and I think they're being, you know, very conscientious about, you know, visibility from the road. They meet all the water requirements with the landscape, so I have no issues, so I'm in favor of the project.
Okay. Commissioner Corbin?
I think it's quite beautiful.
Commissioner Jagiello?
I concur, nothing dead.
Commissioner Powers?
Nothing to add.
Okay. I want to commend you, myself, for being so proactive with the cultural resources issue. I know that's very much appreciated, and I agree, this is much, much, it's very similar to what we saw at concept review. I loved it then, I love it now. So I think with that, if there's no other further comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve design review permit, DRP 16-08, tree permit, T 16-36, for construction of a new single-family residence and tennis court at 10-10 Foothill Road. Oh, with the added, excuse me, with the added condition.
I have some language for that, if you wish.
Mr. Summers is going to craft the language.
Some language you might consider in your motion. To be added is a new number 37, and then the existing 37 renumbered. The applicant shall comply with all applicable municipal separate storms who are system NPDES permit requirements to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director.
As noted.
I will second the motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Quilisi?
Yes.
Commissioner Corbin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jagiello?
Yes.
Commissioner Powers?
Yes.
Commissioner Nolan?
Yes.
Chair Zabilla?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, congratulations. It's kind of anticlimactic, I know. Sorry. I wish we had like a cannon we could blow off or something, but you can stay if you want, but I think there's a better party out there somewhere.
Yeah.
Good night.
That's a very good point.
That was my problem. Okay, we are now going to move on to our discussion item, which is a concept review, CR 17-01, for a new brewery and restaurant with a public pool amenity at the former Ojai Bowl at 1202 East Ojai Avenue. A new restaurant, brewery, and public, public swimming pool project is being conceptually proposed on the site of the former Ojai Valley Bowl Bowling Alley. The proposal represents a significant revitalization in a popularly researched and blighted property, one that could end, wait a minute, do you want me to read all this? One that could end up, no, okay. Okay, so, and I just want to clarify, I think that the language for public swimming's pool has been changed to commercial swimming pool. So anyway, we're going to talk about this, and I'd like to hear from staff.
So, and there's a lot of information in your, in your staff report tonight, but as we always do with concept reviews, we try to take the information submitted by the applicant to the extent that they provide us with details or information that can be analyzed, that's beyond and above conceptual or schematic information. Give some of the highlights, or maybe the red flags as we see them. So we've provided the zoning, general plan consistency, the zoning tables, we always do, the rules that we think are applicable to what you should be looking at, providing. In particular with this one, you know, there's some issues with what really is being presented on here, if it's, if it's restaurant with a brewery, or if it's outdoor recreational, if it's proposed as a motel. So we did our best to kind of give you an overview of what would need to be done and provided to us when they come in as a, as a formal application, and then we give you some rules and regulations, as well as the applicant regarding SEQA and the city circulation element that we think are pertinent to the traffic generated by this, on this particular project site. And then basically just a few things regarding parking, the monument sign, et cetera, et cetera. So with that, unless you'd like me to read them into the, the record, I think that we try to just give you the highlights, and then the concept review is always best functioning as sort of an open workshop, so that you can work with the applicant and get feedback, what's intended to do. We're certainly not here trying to over-regulate or, you know, squash in any way some productive dialogue. So with that, I think that I'm open, any questions anybody has, but we have provided an overview for you, and that's where we end it.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Chair. Just one further comment to add, in case anyone is, numerous of the public new to the Planning Commission for concept reviews. At a concept review, as the Director noted, the goal is to get information about a proposed project, provide some feedback, but the Planning Commission doesn't make decisions. No decisions are made tonight. This is about understanding what is being proposed and understanding what the issues may be, what the challenges may be, what some questions that need to be answered are, but there's no final decision made tonight. And certainly, all issues will be considered further in detail upon submission of a formal application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. That's a wonderful clarification. So if nobody else has questions for staff, then I'd like to invite Mr. Whitman to come up and discuss his concept.
Thanks. Oh, did we get the, our images? No.
Did you email them?
Well, we emailed them, but.
To?
Yeah.
To you.
Oh, to Sherry?
To Dave?
Well, when we submitted the package, way back.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't know anything about that.
Okay.
Do you have one of you present?
No, just those two images that we presented in the package.
And they all have.
Yeah, so.
Two pages.
I gave them to the neighbors, I hand-delivered them to the neighbors, so the neighbors are very aware of the design as well, so I think we could do without that. Well, anyway, thank you for having us back, members of the commission and staff. And I would like to reiterate on the concept, we understand that this is informal, but, you know, there's a lot of time and energy that's going to go into the formal submittal package, environmental review, and so there's a lot of, lot of, there's going to be a lot of work that's going to go into this before it comes back to you. And so we just, you know, we kind of like to get a general feeling, you know, before we go forward. But I'd like to review, a lot of you weren't here in the last concept, the last concept was, or some of you weren't, was pretty substantial. It was, it was much bigger project, about 30,000 square feet, and this one now has been reduced down to 5,000 square feet of building area, with a lot of site amenities that were in place of the architecture, structures, where we're adding, you know, sort of park-like outdoor environment. And the idea is, you know, not only did, listen to your feedback at the last hearing, and also the neighbors, or, you know, everyone was saying it's, you know, it's too much, but we also went to the community, and we got feedback from the community, didn't go to them, but they were talking about, and I said, you know, it'd be great to have, what we need here is, in the valley, is something for families to, you know, go and hang out, and something for kids to do. And so what this, you know, what the concept here is that this is a family-friendly, you know, place for, for you to bring your kids, have them play, and use a swimming pool, you know. Again, another thing was, you know, swimming pools, there's no public swimming pool here in Ojai, and, and so there's no, in the summertime, it's, you know, it's hot, and, and, you know, if you've been over to the athletic club during the, the summer period, it's packed. I mean, it's just really, you know, madhouse over there, and so we, we see a big need for, you know, that sort of facility here in Ojai. It's too bad we don't have a public swimming pool. I mean, it'd be great to have one, but this is, it's just a small pool, it's not going to be a big, a big public swimming pool. It's not a public swimming pool, it's a commercial swimming pool, there'll be a fee or something involved with entering or, you know, purchasing of, of something, but, and I'm not sure how that will work out. But the owner is, he's got two small kids, two little toddler, you know, five-year-olds and a teenage, and so he has facilities in Los Angeles, not with swimming pools, but he kind of is known for having family-friendly, you know, pubs for people to bring their families and kids, and, and it's, you know, a family environment, you know, and, you know, people can drink beer. He's, he's mostly a beer maker, I mean, that's his, kind of his forte, and he adds food, food to that. He's like a vegan kind of guy, so he'd fit in perfectly with Ojai. But let me go through the project, you know, I did do a little presentation. I also have my, a member of my staff here, Shannon, wants to talk a little bit about the green aspects, and Mr. Malley, Mallett, is here to talk a little bit about the landscaping aspects as well. But in your package, you have the plans, but, you know, the amenities include the swimming pool, bocce ball court, shuffle bar court, a climbing wall, the big outdoor, you know, grassy area for frolicking around, and a, there's an outdoor bar that would be, you know, part of that, outdoor space, and, and I think that's about it. It'd be a pool house, bathroom, storage facilities for, for the pool facility. And the restaurant structure is oriented at an angle, and we did that because we felt it was more inviting, it had a better flow. The front of the, of the structure is, you know, you come to it, but the side where you can dine is facing the street, and we want, we wanted to have a street presence, but then you go to the back and it has the great views, and it still has the great views, even, you know, with this orientation, looking out to the mountains, and so that, that was a big priority there. And also, we, the way the driveway is set up, it's, it has the, the code requires to have 125-foot separation between the Golden West and the, and this driveway entrance, and, and so there's no more driveway entrance on Golden West, we have it all on Ojai Avenue. And, you know, it has a. And it has plenty of separation from the, from the intersection for traffic safety. The architecture is rustic, kind of barn-like, kind of agrarian-like, it's meant to convey the idea of a brewery, a brewer, you know, kind of, our idea was going to say brewery, this is a brew, you know, they're going to make beer as well as a restaurant. And so the, and also the owner, he said he didn't want it to feel fancy, that was his feeling, he wanted it to feel casual, kind of like Bacolais in a way, you know, where it's very casual, very downplayed, it's just kind of a, you know, casual Ojai kind of place to hang out. And so that was kind of the idea of the architecture and the metal siding and the metal roof. And then we have heavy timber construction that is expressed in the porch areas and entry area and also in the, we have the grain tower is a feature in the front of the building that's set up on heavy timber structure and there'll be a monument sign painted, kind of, kind of old-style, you know, westerny kind of feeling to it. And there is a service yard behind the structure with, we're proposing containers. And the idea of the containers is it's needed for, they need storage and things for the brewery and it's a fast, easy, temporary kind of, you know, structure to put up, there'll be screening around those containers so that it's not, you know, it won't be seen by anybody. But also, I mean, my thinking is if the brewery goes away, you know, if it say, you know, doesn't make it here in Ojai, then containers go away too and so it can, you know, be much easier to reuse the structure in some other way. The delivery areas is located on an ideal location, that was one of the reasons the structure's angled as it is, so we can bring the delivery area behind the structure, which is required in the city ordinance. And also the back area contained picnic benches, market lights, umbrellas for casual dining experience. And again, the main theme of this new concept is to convey a casual, outdoor experience where patrons can enjoy activities, lounge and relax in Ojai. And then we did have in there a potential for someday down the road, you know, when the world changes, attitudes change, economy changes, that, you know, that we do have a space for a future hotel. We're not, you know, I don't know if there's any kind of vehicle to do that legally at this time, but we just want to put that out there that, that maybe someday we'll be coming back, you know, with that hotel concept. I'd like to turn it over to my associate Shannon Dodge, who, she's going to just say a few things about the green aspects of the project and then, and then Bill, we'll talk about the landscaping.
So this project will have quite a few eco-friendly and sustainable design features. The materials from the existing building will be recycled and donated to Habitat for Humanity and the waste from brewing the beer can actually go to local farmers and used as an organic soil amendment and also for feed for cattle. The building itself will use recycled and sustainable materials where feasible and we plan to use native drought-tolerant plants and water-saving irrigation, which Bill will probably go into more detail, as well as a water retention system to keep water on the site, which Bill will also elaborate on. And as Mark kind of mentioned before, he situated the building on the side at an angle and with the trees that will be planted on the south and west side, and I think there's an existing sycamore there as well, that will help kind of shade and make the building itself more solar and energy efficient. As for traffic, because of its location and that the facility will be open to the public and used by tourists staying at the local motels in town, we can count on a large number of customers to walk and ride bikes or use the trolley to get to the property and also using Uber to get there as well instead of driving. There will be less traffic from locals leaving town to find something similar elsewhere. And the proposed use can also accommodate less people than the bowling alley did when it was open, or if it were reopened as a bowling alley, it would cause less traffic as the restaurant brewery. And again, the proposed design will also be much more attractive, energy efficient, and much more environmentally friendly than the bowling alley is right now. Bill?
Hello? I kind of just came back onto this project, we, kind of the hotel side of it been set aside, so I just jumped back in in the last day or so, so. Basically, I'm just talking concept of what I anticipate the landscape being on this new revised project. It definitely will be using a lot of native plant material, we'll also be using climate-appropriate planting material. We're hoping that at least fifty percent of the paving in the parking lot will be permeable, gravel and/or permeable pavers. We want to use a gray water system to recycle the water used for the brewing process and from the restaurant. One of our goals is to see if we can get to a kind of a net zero water use for the landscape by using gray water, rain harvest, infiltration on the site. We'll be using all of the latest kind of storm water management knowledge that we have to infiltrate all the water on the site and use it, bio swales and infiltration. Any exterior landscape lighting will be LED and night sky compliant. We'll probably have electric vehicle plugins also on the site and irrigation system that's weather-based and smart. We hope to incorporate bike storage and also, the lawn that's proposed will be a native bent grass, low water use lawn, uses about thirty percent less than standard marathon lawn that you would see in a normal residential home or any other development. Pretty much the concept of the landscape that it proposes.
Do you have a question?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Quilisi?
A couple of things, you mentioned water retention.
Yes.
Is there somewhere in this drawing that we have where you anticipate there's a bio swale on the property?
So that drawing is a concept drawing by the architect that we have not developed yet. But I would say on the perimeter, from what I see there is opportunity to...
Somewhere along Golden West?
Yes.
Okay. I also noticed, and I grant you, this is not the landscape architect's drawing...
Yes.
But I see seven palm trees.
Mm-hmm.
And at least some varieties of palms are considered invasive species. And so I'm wondering about your thoughts along that line.
We will not...
I mean, we also have lots of palm trees here already.
I don't anticipate using any of the Washingtonias, which are the invasive palms. I think that was just a concept from the architect, whether we use palms or not, that's kind of something I'll be going back with the client and discussing. No palms, good. That's what I wanted to say, no palms.
I have a question for Mr. Whitman, when he's available again.
Any other questions for Mr. Mallett? Mr., Commissioner Powers?
Thank you. I think you're the right person to address this too. It's in regards to the permeable surfaces and the gray water. So the sources of the gray water are going to be what? That's my first question.
So, the brewing process?
Yes.
There's wastewater generated from the brewing process, also from any of the available gray water. What was I going to say? Dishwashing is allowed for gray water, sinks, that kind of thing.
Okay. I did some research of my own, going to, I believe it was the American Brewers Association that was speaking about water to product ratio and that four liters of water to every liter of beer brewed is the low end. And it goes up to eight to one at times. What I'm wanting to see is some really hard data, like how much wastewater is there going to be, what's the ratio going to be, how much gray water, and I know we can't gauge how much it's going to rain, we can't go by history, we can't really go by average rainfall anymore, because it mentions offsets and you just mentioned net zero.
Right.
But I want to really see some data that, that can really occur before I feel comfortable with the brewing process and the offsets.
Okay, that's very reasonable.
Okay, I think we may have some, did you have a question for the landscape architect? No, missed, okay, so maybe, thanks, thanks Bill. Mr. Whitman? Commissioner Corbin?
Well, this rendering is a lovely park-like setting, but it doesn't show us what the, all the parking actually looks like. And I'm wondering how that's actually, I mean, there's some trees in there, but I'm wondering how that's going to be shielded from the, from the street?
All shielded, I see.
So that it doesn't just look like a suburban sea of parking?
Right.
That's my first question. And my second question is regarding the fact that, from this drawing, and I know it's just a concept review, it looks like a private club and it doesn't really greet the street in any way than would invite me to come in, I'd think, oh, that looks nice, I wonder what's in there, but it doesn't reach out and, you know, invite me to come into the space, so I'm wondering how you read that?
I, you know, I don't see that. The dining area that's out, that's out quite near to the corner of the street there, there's outdoor plaza that would, there'll be outdoor dining and so as you drive by, you'll see people hanging out and dining and hopefully it'll bring you in. And then, and then that, I would say it's a southwest orientation is going to be, you know, a lot of glass doors that you'll be like, actually, you'll see right into the restaurant at that, you know, in that area. And so, you don't see it, I'm sorry. Yeah. It's the front corner of the building is outdoor dining.
But it's kind of behind a sea of trees there.
Yeah, yeah.
It just feels private to me.
It's meant to be, you know, yeah, well, I'm not sure exactly why it makes you feel that way, but the intention is it's going to be open to the public for all the community and everybody to come and use, it's not meant to be a private space. There's no walls or gates or anything that would keep anybody...
It would be nice if that, I mean, as an asset...
Mike, Mike, Bobby, Mike, sorry.
Yeah, we could add some more glass to the front of the building perhaps, but we're trying to get away from the west-facing glass where the entry is and, because that's, you know, bad solar orientation and heat gain. So most of the glass is on that, on the other direction, the eastern, southern eastern direction, that's going to be a lot of glass on that side that's opened up to the outdoor dining. And it's also covered, has a big outdoor covered space right there. Perhaps in the next go-around, we can give you some more graphics that give you a better feeling of that.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, this entrance will be a little more obvious...
Yeah, right, we can show you that in more detail.
So that we'll know where the front door is.
Right, all right.
Commissioner Quilisi?
Thank you Chair Zabilla. A couple of things, I noticed in the staff report on the basic development standards, there are a lot of yes-but kind of answers that where all the footnotes are in there. And I'm wondering from staff, is there anything that's a serious failing, first of all? Because it all says yes, it says yes-but on about eight different categories, and maybe that's appropriate for a, for a concept review. I'm not objecting per se.
I don't think that, I think that the, again, the information provided on this concept review is really, really basic.
Sketchy, yeah.
It's schematic, yes. So, so you know, we're not trying to jump to conclusions and therefore overregulate the project, and so it really depends on how the project comes in ultimately, that's why they're saying to be announced. I mean, you know, you clearly can see like as far as parking is concerned, the project has provided parking for the restaurant and that's it. You know, the park, it's not, the outdoor dining area isn't parked, the pool isn't parked, the cabana isn't parked, but we don't know really what the use is because we don't have a real definitive, you know, a real definitive use, like, we don't know if they're considering events, you know, you have grassy area, are they going to do events, are they going to have music, are, you know, is, how this is really going to function, so it's really hard for us without jumping to conclusions, which doesn't benefit the applicant and it's just a lot of wasted time for us. So we've answered them to the extent that he's provided us information to answer them. Again, we're trying to keep it in an open kind of brainstorming way and not to be so restrictive. You know, we can, as, you know, we can get into the nitty-gritty about circulation, there's no turnaround down at the parking lot, where the handicap is, is right at the entrance and the traffic movement, you know, we can get into those types of things, but that's rather fine-tuning, something that we're trying to keep more in an open conceptual because I assume what Mark is looking for is more along the lines of, you know, general, general concepts, you know, what do you feel about this and how about that, and what about the orientation of the building and those types of things, just like Commissioner Corbin has said. But yeah, that's why it says yes-but, because it's all subject to change depending on how it comes in or, and how it's designed. I mean, for instance, we really don't know if there's any areas that create noise, if there's going to have to be noise buffers, we don't know any of those things because, and in fact, if you just look at the elevation, the elevation is, there's not enough there for us to really comment on. So I think we're just trying to keep it to what he, the questions that Mark's asked in his letter, and I'm sorry, I'm remiss in saying that yes, along with the two conceptual drawings, we did provide the applicant's project description.
Yep.
And I think that he, that gives you an idea of what he's looking to get answered tonight, you know, as far as, as, you know, as he just stated a minute ago, their intention is to possibly have a motel and would there be a way that they could get an entitlement for all of it and only build part of it, kind of putting words in his mouth, but that's kind of what he's brought up before when he talked to the last concept. And then, you know, his issues with, you know, the actual kind of concept of it being rustic, how it's oriented to the street, how it's going to work with traffic and water and those types of things. And that's what we tried to provide in the staff report. So yes, you are right, there are things that are sort of answers but not real answers.
Okay.
And we're happy to work with Mark at any time that he wants to come in and fine-tune it and get it and move it further along. I think what he's trying to do, and he can speak to this more than I can, is make sure that as he's moving along with more vetted plans, he's not told to completely redo them, you know, like, you know, what concepts you like, right?
I did, and just, in the spirit of full disclosure, I spent five years on a sign board in Richardson, Texas, so that's a particular interest of mine, is signage in the city. And you speak of this grain silo, I at first thought it was a water tank.
Well, it is.
Or a simulated water tank.
It looks like a water tank, but it is, is actual a functional grain silo for their hops or whatever they use for brewing the beer.
How interesting, okay. If, if the signage for this project is on that, it's going to be the tallest sign in town by quite a bit. And it, it may be that if you have a low monument sign that goes into that space between the ingress and egress lanes of your parking area, that you could make it seem more like a restaurant and a brewery. And so I would, I would certainly consider that because I, I believe the staff report says if, if that grain silo is a monument sign in and of itself, it's going to require some kind of waiver.
Oh, I see, the height, the height is...
And it would be easier if you didn't have to do that.
Right.
Second, I see that you have some parking spaces right up close and the staff report said... that the project was less than 10 feet from the street, I guess it was, from the street. And, and was that the parking spaces up at the front that are less than 10 feet? It's the first line on your development table. Not the first line, but.
Okay, hold on.
The first one that said TBD, I think.
I, I didn't get those comments. I'm not sure what, what that means.
Uh, the front setback. It says less than 10, some parking appears to be within the required front yard. Is that the requirement, that there's 10 feet back from, from the public right-of-way before you have any hardscape? Is that the general requirement?
No, it's a set, no, it's not a general requirement, it's the specific requirement for the zone district that this project's in. But the parking, the parking, these parking spaces, these are the ADA compliant parking spaces, I assume in the front, that's what they look to be.
Well, there are three that run parallel to the street and then there are three that run perpendicular to the street.
Correct.
To Ojai Avenue.
Right, mhm.
I think those are the kind of details that Kathy's talking about, working out in the future. I think the general comment that I heard earlier was, you know, that we're not counting the outdoor dining for parking and, and we, but we have 46 parking spaces, which we think for most, all occasions is gonna be, you know, ample, you know, parking. And we, we can, you know, park, make this thing into one giant parking lot. But, um, you know, I think I heard from this commission in the past that they don't wanna design projects to cars, they'd rather design them for people.
I don't find the bowling alley parking lot all that attractive.
Yeah, that's, that's the example of that, where it meets the code, but it takes over the whole, you know, project. And so it was my philosophy that, um, that parking, you know, will, you know, we have a lot of parking spaces. And, you know, what, like my associate said, with Uber and other, um, and the trolley goes right by there and other forms of, um, alternative transportations, you know, we feel, you know, we're good with the parking, with the way it is. And so that's, that's kind of the feedback we're looking for at this point.
Okay, and the last thing I think that I have to question is the storage containers. Are, are those on permanent foundations? Are we talking about Conex containers? Are you talking about semi-trailers? What, what do you anticipate being there? Is it room temperature or outdoor temperature storage? Is it refrigerated storage? What, what kind of stuff?
Yeah, um, thanks for the question. Yeah, it, I don't know what you call them about Conex, but yeah, those kind of containers that you see, um, on the back of ships.
Yeah.
That what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, that's Conex, right.
And so that's, and so it'd be those kind of containers. Um, uh, and, and one of them would be a refrigerated keg storage, um, container.
Okay, so that's gonna have a compressor running all the time?
Yeah, some kind of refrigeration, yes, yeah. And they, uh, they would go on slab, but it does need some kind of earthquake, um, anchorage that, that goes along with it structurally that would keep it from, you know, moving around an earthquake.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Jagiello?
Hello, Mark.
Hi.
I actually think it would look very nice coming into town instead of that big, flodgy parking lot that we look at with the landscaping and the orientation. And the grain silo, I think, is a great little added, um, feature. Um, I want, I'd like you to address the, um, the vision of the owner in regards to events. Like, we understand that, you know, there's a brewery and a restaurant. Obviously, there's a lot of seating around the, the pool, the cabanas, you know, the, the backyard, the bocce court. What kind of events do you anticipate, uh, having at this facility?
Um, I'm, I'm not the operator, but, um, what he has told me is he, you know, mostly sees it as a family-oriented, you know, kind of, uh, on a daily basis. It'd be just the customers that come and dine and eat. Um, but the special events that might occur would be a wedding occasionally. How often that would be, I, you know, I have no idea. Um, but I think he's, he's saying, you know, the events over there at the, um, what's it, the Rancho place over here, you know, is, is people, you know, hanging out, you know, listening to music and enjoying the outdoors and and that, that kind, you know, that's, I think that's generally what he's, you know, that's his clientele. And again, back to the parking, let me, I have one more point. Is his, you know, one of the reasons he dropped the hotel was, he says his clientele are the kind of clientele that's gonna wanna stay at the Capri rather than some fancy hotel that he's gonna build. And so he, we see this as a great boom for the, for the existing motels that are around that area for people to come and walk from those hotels and use this facility. Yes, you know, it's gonna be a big plus for those existing motels, you know, and he, and he sees the people staying there.
Are you finished? Okay, Commissioner Corbin?
I just wanted to add in relation to my front door comment, um, that perhaps as you go along on this, if you give some more attention to how people enter through alternative means rather than driving in so that it's more inviting for a biker or somebody to walk in, to encourage that.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Nolan? She's visiting with her neighbor.
Break it up.
So, um, generally, I, I'm in favor of the project, but I have a lot of questions and, and there potentially could be some issues. But I also, I wanted to start by saying that I'm in agreement with Commissioner Corbin, and that was one of the questions that I had, was, um, I mean, I like that you have this plant buffer, but I, what I really think is important, it's something that, you know, we've looked at in our general plan and other projects, is to really have that kind of pedestrian street face. And I agree that it's kind of tucked in and it seems a little more private, so if, if it could have more of a face on the street. And, um, I know that you mentioned, um, for, you know, alternative transportation, you know, possibly bikes and walkers. And I do know, you know, that the city is, um, looking at, um, this ATP grant, which would provide continuous access down Ojai Avenue and actually in that area would have bike lanes. So there would be, you know, more access for that, and I think that visibility on the street would be important. Some of the questions that I have are, um, so who would be using the amenities? Is it people that are coming into the, the restaurant brewery? That would get to use the pool and the shuffleboard and everything? So it wouldn't be just somebody coming off the street saying, hey, I wanna pay and use the pool? It would be?
Well, I'm not sure about that. I mean,
Okay.
the way I see it is something similar to the athletic club, that it might be a membership that, um, people have to pay to, you know, to come in or, or, you know, that they have one-time user fee that you can, you know, pay to, to go to the athletic club if, on a one-time basis. And so I'm not sure if it's that or if you have to get a minimum, you know, meal or, you know,
So yet to be determined.
So many beers, to be determined, yeah.
So that's to be determined.
So, yeah.
Um, and I'm just gonna go through my, my questions or concerns. So the other one that I had was, so with the brewery, um, is it just, is the beer that's made just gonna be used for the restaurant and not bottled and being shipped somewhere? So it's not a manufacturing, other than local.
Yeah, the, the brewery
On-site use.
base is only a thousand square feet, and so it's very small.
Okay.
It's enough to make, you know, four different beers maybe, and, and so it's just, just, and it's just for the use of onsite.
Okay, good. And then the other, another concern was the sound issue. So it sounds like potentially there could be a lot going on there. And I'm, um, you know, I realize there's a residential area behind, as you well know, and I'm concerned about that. And so what the sound issues would be, would be like, what would be your operating hours? And you just spoke about potentially having some events and/or music. I know we have, um, you know, some ordinances here, of course, with sound. But I, I would just want you to be really conscious of that. I'm in, I, I love the community aspect and I know there's a need, especially for like young families, and a lot of the young people, actually all ages like to have the outdoor venues, they're very popular right now.
Colley's does some great.
Yeah, but Colley's does it. And then, you know, in addition, we have some other restaurants that are on that same side of the street without some outdoor dining. Of course, they don't have a pool and shuffleboard and all the other amenities that you're speaking about, but they, they do face the residential, so that's a concern. Um, and you mentioned those containers, I believe you said they would be screened.
Yes.
Fully screened?
Yes.
Okay, that was another question. Um, and I asked about the, the operating hours. And, you know, the sustainability, um, things that you brought up, I'm, I'm all in favor of. And as Commissioner Powers pointed out, it'd be nice to see, um, I know at this point you can't do super hard numbers until you design it out, but maybe to see another level
Yeah, I'm not sure what those.
Yeah, just to see, okay, where do we fall? Because we all know water's an issue here in the valley, number one. But I think what, what I'm seeing here is, um, until we have the information on like exactly what's gonna happen, what are the operating hours, it all ties back into parking and traffic. And potentially sound. I, I feel like those are the, the things that kind of, you know, reach out. Um, and depending on, um, what you're gonna be doing there, those are all gonna be affected. So I would encourage you to, to really dial that in or, you know, talk with the owner and say, well, this is exactly what we wanna do. It's gonna require this amount of parking, can we meet it or not? And, um, I think, you know, that probably wraps it up for me. But I, I agree on that street face, the pedestrian access too.
Um, I have a quick question, um, since most of the commissioners are asking my questions as well. Um, why the temper, why the containers? Why wasn't that built into the original structure? And, and how, I didn't understand your comment that the, the, the containers are somehow relative to, that it somehow facilitates a change if the business doesn't make it. I didn't understand that comment.
Well, if the, uh, the brewery, you know, goes away, it's just a restaurant, then, you know, there's plenty of storage inside the restaurant and you wouldn't need those containers for just a restaurant. And so it does allow some flexibility there. But the main reason the owner wants to do is there's low-cost storage, to tell you the truth. And so that's the main reason he wants to have those containers.
Mm-hmm, but distribution is definitely not part of the mission.
No.
Okay. Um, we have a lot of people in the audience, oh, Commissioner Powers, sorry.
I have a few questions. I have a few comments that will be popular to some and not popular to others. I would, um, Commissioner Nolan brought up traffic and parking and sound. I might do them in a different order of priority for myself. I think because there is a neighborhood and there's lots of outdoor recreation, the, the noise, um, could potentially be a challenge. And I would wanna see some kind of official study required prior to moving forward on that. In your letter, you mentioned 18 inches of rain a year with 100% permio project could potentially produce 2.2, 2.5 acre feet or 750,000 gallons of water per year. I think that's a great idealistic view, the 18 inches per year. It's, might have been our average. But I think I would truncate the years that are being looked at for that and, um.
Those aren't scientific numbers, those are, you know, numbers off the, you know. My, my point was, is that I, I think one of our, we have a lot of rain. I mean, you know, relative to a lot of rain, even during our drought years, we had some rainstorms and all the water went down the creeks and, and didn't. We're not harvesting the water, we should be doing more of that in the valley.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Business and residential. Um, and I just wanna reiterate something you said, because as you probably know on social media, there's been long threads about this project generated on Facebook, over 200 comments on the.
What, what, what Facebook is that?
It's Ojai Community Forum page, so there's one thread about this project, there's 200 comments. People are split, some people love it, some people don't.
Alright.
Um, you're always gonna get that.
I'll, I'll have to check that out.
But the part I wanna reiterate is that, you know, it's a 30,000 gallon pool. It's not a commercial public pool, it's the size of a hotel or a home pool. And so when you say, um, you know, in reality, it's not gonna fit that many people. So the Rancho Inn has a pool, the public comes, use it, gets filled up pretty quick with kids, it's not all that many. So when, when I think about, oh, here's a pool the community can use, you think about summer and how many families there are. A 30,000 gallon pool will service a certain amount, but it's not. It's not the public pool everyone is hoping for.
Yeah, it's not, it's not that.
So I just wanted to reiterate that for clarity's sake. In terms of the grass area, I'm not pro-grass in any shape or form. And I know it's a comfortable area to lay on and in rec areas you have grass and our golf courses have grass and, um, I'm not, just not a big fan of grass. So I'm, just wanted to say that on the record too. And I understand why you would want it there. But I think given, given our drought situation, grassing isn't a wise choice to put anywhere. I also wanna say just, the way I look at things, I can't look at a new concept like this. I get it's a, it's a blighted lot, something wants to happen there. I always look at what's wanted and what's needed. And I also can't look at any project separate from other things that are going on in our city. So I can't look at this and also not think about, um, the affordable housing issue or I, or put out of my mind the OTID tax issue. Like, everything's connected, everything's connected. So we try to, you know, stay focused on the subject at hand, which we and I can do. But it's not disconnected from everything else. So I do have, I am a little challenged with the whole project altogether of the concept of having a brewery in Ojai. Again, is it wanted and needed? Or is it a particular business person's idea and passion to have a brewery, cause he's had them before? Is it something wanted and needed and is serving the community? So overall, I'm challenged with the whole concept to begin with of having that particular project in the city.
I, can I comment on that?
Of course.
Well, it's supply and demand, I think it, like I said, if the brewery doesn't work, it would go away if there was no demand for it. And so he, this, this particular client who invested quite a bit of money into this piece of property, his business is brewing beer and he's done very well at it and, um, he sees this as an opportunity. You know, that there is a demand for that.
Um, I think we're gonna move on, thank you, Mark. I think we're gonna move on in here from the public. And then we'll, we'll bring it back and if there's any other questions, we can ask them at that time.
Well, the public's coming up, one point to note, just again for the record, thank you Chair.
Yes.
Um, when the commission considers the project upon the submission of a formal application with all required studies and analyses, the commission's findings will be based on the project and the findings set in the code, taking into account all of the provisions of the code and the general plan and the California Environmental Quality Act, but not necessarily taking into account other concerns that aren't within what the code allows the planning commission to consider. Their review will be, of course, confined to what the code permits them to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Barbara Snyder? Did we lose Barbara? Okay, well, I will come back to her. Cindy Swallows?
Hi, my name is Cindy Swallows, um, my address is 1121 Sunny Glen. I back right up to the project. I have a few concerns and questions, um, for Mr. Whitman that I'd like him to answer. And one of them is, um, I understand it's gonna be a brewery, I would like to know if they're gonna have, um, alcohol license. Will they be selling hard liquor? And what are the, um, times they're gonna close? What times during the day, evening? Will they be closing? Will they be closing at 10:00, midnight, 2:00 AM? Also, I'd like to know about deliveries. What time will deliveries be made? Will they be made at 5:00 AM? Will they be made at midnight? Those are my concerns for the, one part. But my main concern is the back area for special events. The back area for special events will be right at my back door. If there's special events, special events to me means weddings, birthday parties, rehearsal dinners, uh, bar mitzvahs, whatever, whatever's a party where you can get a lot of people together. There'll be music that I'll be hearing that I may not wanna be hearing. In this day and age, there's all types of music. I'm not a fan of rap and there's some rap that I don't wanna hear. I don't want to hear it. Also lighting, weddings, we're going to require big lights, lights so that they could see in the evening for the reception and stuff like that. So my backyard will be lit. I won't be able to sit back there and enjoy the stars and the mountains and just relaxing my days after work. And also, he's concerned with families, wanting families and stuff like this. When I moved into the property, the bowling alley was there and I had no problems with bowling alley. I didn't hear anything from the bowling alley. And there was never any issues with noise, lights, traffic. It was just, it was there. People came, went, and like I said, I didn't have issues with music or lights. So I think that's about it. But I'm just really concerned, that is my main concern. I just want to be able to enjoy my home when I come home from work in the evening, to sit in my backyard. I turn on my music softly so that I can hear my music so that it does not disturb my neighbors. It's on a low volume where I'm just sitting there in my chair. And I just appreciate if the committee would take that into consideration, that we, there are neighbors there and people in the community.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
Vivian Chenelli.
I want to say hello sharks. I've always wanted to say that. Hope to do that one day. Anyway, my name is Vivian Chenelli and my address is 201 Golden West. A lot of people have brought up really the issues that I am most concerned about being the next-door neighbor to the bowling alley. So we share, right now, a very flimsy wall, but we share, we share a common wall. And, you know, I received a letter from Mark and I just wanted to read you a portion of it. Well, first, let me just say, when I first saw the first proposal, what came to my mind was this was more than just the individual pieces. It was more of an activity. It seemed like an outside activity complex. And then Mark reiterated that for me today because, you know, he mentioned that outside there would be a pool, bocce, shuffleboard, climbing wall, grassy area that is for special events, and an outdoor bar, people coming from the brewery, from the pub, going, sitting outside in the back. And all I, all I hear right now is, is noise coming from that property. If I sit in my yard right now with nothing happening, I can hear the white noise of the traffic on Ojai Boulevard. So I just, you know, just try to imagine if I hear that, what I will hear. And my neighbors, I have a couple of neighbors as well who aren't speaking tonight, but they live kitty-corner from that, from the corner of the property. And they'll, they'll be hearing the same thing as well. And what I didn't understand, Mark, that you had written, you wrote, "The new proposed project generally includes," and then you wrote the, you know, the brewery, and then you said, "A swimming pool, outdoor dining, and other recreational amenities in the middle of the property, and an open yard area in the rear for special events, and as a buffer for adjacent residential uses." So I saw that not as a buffer, but something that would need a buffer to, you know, Cindy mentioned weddings, parties, anything is going to waft over into, or not waft, because waft is like this, but, you know, like bam, at the neighborhood. And I moved to that part of town. I'm in love with that part of town because it is so quiet and beautiful and, and all the other hotels seem to maintain the quiet integrity of that part of town. And this just seems like, you know, it, it wouldn't be. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I think, I think that was pretty much it. Like I said, you've all, you've already touched on everything that was, that was concerning me. Oh, one other thing is if there are special events and people are at the brewery and are at the restaurant, and then there's events above and beyond that, you know, the parking is going to be overflowing. And I'm just wondering how much on Golden West, is all that traffic going to be back, you know, parking? Did that make sense? My sentences were a little grumbled. But I just wanted to tell you as a retired, recent retired kindergarten teacher, the first thing I would teach first day, second lesson, first lesson was sneeze into your elbows, you know, and cough into your elbow. The second lesson was some iteration of the golden rule. If, you know, if you don't want, don't do to somebody else what you wouldn't want them to do to you. And that's, you know, we grapple with that as children enough. I go through that the whole year. But as an adult, I don't know if, if Mark's owner would like to be living next to his Anyway, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you so much.
I really appreciate it. I'm so nervous.
No, you did a great job. And it's really important that people come and share their views. Is it Charlie Simmons?
My problem is, is I run a assisted living. And it's right on that, I'm right next to.
Cindy.
Cindy. So I'm going to have problems with noise and the clients. And I'm really worried about losing the business because they like it quiet. They don't want noise and they don't like the lights. When they, when you put, when we put them to bed, they don't like lights at all. They don't, you know, it bothers their eyes or they need to go to sleep. And with the noise there, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna affect my business. I know that. You can't have loud noises all the time and keep, keep your clients and your clients' families. They're not going to like it because it's a quiet place and we won't be out, out in the backyard. We won't be able to take them out in the backyard. It's, it's not going to work for me. And the lighting, they said they wanted to use the, that bright lights that they use now. What is it, what do they call them?
LEDs.
LEDs. They are so bright that it's going to light up my whole backyard. They're not going to be able to sleep. So I don't know why the city doesn't see if we could find something else for that property. Maybe something for the kids. Something that's not going to bring in people that, with a lot of alcohol, a lot of partying, a lot of, lot going on. It's just really not a great place for that. So that's my issue, is losing my business and with the lighting, it's going to kill it and the noise.
Thank you, Charlie. Susa Francina.
After hearing the issues with the neighbors, I'm not sure, you know, where to begin because I see a lot of good things about the project. So if all the issues that the neighbors raised can be mitigated, then I'll, I'll move to what I was going to say. And I'm speaking as a member of the public, of course, not as a city council member, but I am a member of the Ojai Complete, of the Complete Streets Committee and the Ojai Valley Bicycle Commission, Committee, organization, whatever. Okay, so what I was going to say, if all the issues that the other, that the commissioners have brought up can be addressed, I see this business as a wonderful opportunity to show Ojai what a truly bicycle-friendly business looks like. And that would mean that the bike parking would be as close as the nearest parking spots. Oftentimes, it's put somewhere else as an afterthought. So in, in your planning, if you could put lots and lots of different kinds of bike parking in front, the kind of bike parking that would, you know, because there's different styles of bikes. Bike parking in Ojai is still woefully antiquated and insufficient. Everywhere I go, I see, you know, bicycles parked, piled up. So what I was going to say, what Commissioner Nolan said, that whole stretch of town is going to become very bicycle-friendly if our plans come to fruition, which I think they will, there's going to be bike lanes. And at the entrance of Ojai, we're going to have Boku, and I've discussed this with those business owners, and they want to make their business a model bicycle-friendly business. They have great plans for it because they're right by the bike trail. So the good part about this business, if you do it right, we would have this model bike-friendly business at each end of town. And that could handle some of the noise and the traffic issues because inevitably, the business is going to pull tra, more traffic through town. So that's basically, I share all the concerns that were already raised, but that was what I was going to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susa. Did Barbara Snyder appear? No? Okay. I think I'm out of speakers cards. Does anybody else have something they would like to share? This isn't really a question forum so much. So I think I'm going to bring it back to the commission and I think we will perhaps just go around for any final thoughts on the matter based on everything that we've heard tonight. Commissioner Quillisi.
Thank you, Chair Zabilla. I think that, that those present here and those watching on television should understand that first, this is just a concept review. It's, we're not approving any particular design. Second, and I am, I'm very concerned myself about light and noise. That I think is, is a concern in general across the city. But we also have to recognize, I think that there is nothing so dark and so quiet as an abandoned bowling alley. We're not, we're not going to be able to put anything there and have no net new light and no net new noise compared to an abandoned bowling alley. We have regulations already in place, the dark skies business, the, we have noise ordinance already that, that specifies hours of noise at certain levels and, and lower noise levels outside of those hours. And if, if those are insufficient to satisfy the neighborhood, then we may need to do something about that. But I don't think that leaving this as an abandoned bowling alley is going to serve either the city or the citizens. So my, my thought is the city should encourage something there and we should be very watchful of the noise and the light considerations and the traffic considerations, but not to the extent that we say, okay, we can't have any of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Corbin.
I would agree with that.
Commissioner Jagiello.
Very well said. I would concur with that. To you, Mark, I think Commissioner Nolan said it all. The main concentration on developing your plan is obviously going to be the parking, the noise, the light, the traffic, and the events. Those are the, those seem to be the issues that people have, the neighbors have, and they're going to come up over and over again. So in your planning, I think you can create a plan that addresses those things. We had similar questions about noise in the winery when that came forth and the events they were going to have. You can look up into that process because a lot of those things were talked about and mitigated through, through planning. So I think they can be dealt with, but you really got to listen to your, listen to the neighbors and, and create a plan that addresses those, those issues. And a lot of it, like Mr. Quillisi said, is going to be relegated to our ordinances. We have ordinances for lighting, we have ordinances for noise, and, but you might want to take an extra step there to look into that and create a plan that addresses that in a big way.
Yeah, it's very difficult to comment with any sort of intelligence without the environmental information in front of us. So I think everybody's cautioned you on that matter. I think that when a C1 backs up to a residential neighborhood, you really are talking about something like 45 or 55 decibels at the property line, I think. And, you know, rather than set you up to fail, let's really look at, obviously, how to make that make sense. Maybe it's, I think a family restaurant is, is always a great thing in Ojai. But maybe in terms of the activities, maybe, maybe something indoors, maybe locating something inside in a, with a different kind of idea that sort of circumvents the whole issue, might be something to consider. Aside from that, as ever, I am concerned about the water. I definitely would, you know, really want to see something according to what Mr. Mallett suggested, a net, a net neutral, water-neutral type of a project that's really is based on, as Commissioner Powers suggested, some real hard data. I'm not a big fan of the silo sign, I got to say. It looks a little Disneyland to me. But something maybe a little more low-key. I love the design otherwise, what I see of the design, I should say. But again, thank you for your patience. Thank you for listening. I'll just reiterate that one of the audience members asked about, and I know you're not the operator, times, whether or not there's going to be hard liquor, how are deliveries going to be handled, and obviously, special events. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Nolan.
Well, my fellow commissioners have said pretty much what I would like to say. And I think, you know, once you start dialing it in, the events and/or amenities that you're possibly proposing, scaling that down may be the way to go as far as sound goes, the traffic, the parking and all of that. And I still highly encourage you to, if possible, orient it a little bit more to the street so there's pedestrian interface. And once again, having a little more hard data as far as the net zero and the water issues, the sustainability issues. And definitely keep the neighbors in mind and think about having a really good buffer between the two properties, meaning your commercial property and the residential properties behind you. But I do want to say that I, I think there's a need for, you know, gathering places in Ojai. And I know that the ones that we do have are highly popular, people like to go. And I do like to see places where families can go. I know our school districts, you know, school district is having issues with decline in students. And I like to see things that actually encourage more families to be here and using, using the city. Thanks.
Any further comments, Commissioner Powers? Well, it's your turn. It's your turn.
It's a beautiful design, Mark. I've, I've loved everything I've seen you design. And I like what I just heard about possibly taking some of the activities indoors. You know, there are indoor climbing walls, shuffleboard could be indoors. So that's a consideration. It would change, you know, the, the experience, but it would certainly cut down noise. You, you, you mentioned the term supply and demand to me. So I, you know, I kind of respond to that because I think there's other considerations other than supply and demand in terms of the entire milieu we're living in, in Ojai, and also in terms of what we want the future to be here. So supply and demand certainly, of course, it's, it's good business acumen. And only looking at it that way is a little antiquated for me. So I just think there's other considerations in terms of, again, what's wanted and needed in Ojai. And I agree, Commissioner Quillisi, that having a blighted abandoned bowling alley.
Nice and dark and quiet.
You know. Um. nice and dark and quiet, you know. I don't know. I think, you know, it would, it would be interesting to know what other interests and passions the owner of the property has. And it might become something else.
Anybody else? Commissioner Jagiello?
This may not work, but, you know, I'm thinking of how sound attenuation, you know, in the buffer zone. And at the same time, it conflicts with other requirements, but I'm just going to say it just to throw the thought out there, that if you put the restaurant in the event area where the existing bowling alley is with a, with a sound wall on the back property, that pretty much would create no sound, and it would create a buffer to the events that would be on the front side of it. So that's, that's a very practical way to deal with that issue. But it, it definitely isn't as aesthetic. I agree.
All right. Well, I think one of the main considerations for the design was to be, you know, one of my, my thinking was that the city wants to see the structures out at the street. And so we are right at the setback, on the front setback, and having the connectivity to the street, I think that was the main consideration for the structure to be out in front. And also the views. And so, but it could work the way you're talking about, but you have parking in the front, and you have, and your activities in the front, and the views are the other way.
It's a trade-off, right? I mean, it's a trade-off.
We did, we did think about all that, and I'm going to think about it some more with all these comments, but I appreciate everything everybody's put in, and we'll, you know, definitely come back with something new and hopefully better. And I, you know, really appreciate your comments, Mr.
Well, I'm just thinking additional tall plantings along the back edge of the property might mitigate a lot of the noise and light for the immediately adjacent properties. I don't know.
No. Planting do not attenuate, attenuate noise. That's.
I think, I think, yeah.
That's a.
A wall was better.
Ideal. I mean, a sound engineer would tell you that, 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 that's just a misnomer, that that attenuates noise. Plantings just are just a, they, any place there's a gap, noise goes through. So unless it's a solid barrier, it's just going to go through or travel over the top. I mean, you know, he, I mean, Mark's going to have to figure out, as far as sound is concerned, you know, where the noisy activities are, and then, and then he'd have to have an engineer study it so that you know how it comes up and whether it would fall over or whether there would be, you know, what he'd have. It's, it's really up to how he designs it, where it, where it is. I think the building, we know, because it becomes a, a solid wall up there, a solid bar, barrier, will, would work. But I also agree with Mark's point of view. It's counterintuitive to what, what we're trying to do with pedestrian-friendly and, and bicyclists and getting everybody up front. And it's just one of those things that, that the designer has to, has to, you know, balance because there are competing or conflicting goals and policies for the, from the city in anything we work on. But I do think that he just have to decide where the areas are and then work with them to, you know, create some kind, you know, with, with, with somebody that knows sound and noise.
I think that's a good idea. Bring in an expert who can say, you know, we're going to be at the 45 decibels, whatever.
Yeah, we do have, we have rules already in place.
We do.
Put in place by people above our pay grade as to noise and light on adjacent properties. And if the city council thinks that something more restrictive is appropriate, they will do something about that. But I think at the moment, you need to follow the rules that we have in any case, so.
Yeah.
Designed to that.
If I can just add, I just think it's, it's a perfect time for him to work out these things in the design rather than to have to constrain a business owner with, you know, conditions of operational. If he can do it by design, it's always better for the, the business owner and the operational person.
I agree completely.
So I think that's what he's, what we're trying to tell him.
Yeah, I think the worst thing is place conditions on the business that restricts his ability to do business.
And, and behind those are all sorts of assumptions as to what's going to happen if you put a particular thing in place. And you have a number of ways of mitigating both noise and sound, I think, and so go make use of those.
All right. Thank you very much for all your input.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, with that, thank you, everybody, for coming and for participating. It makes a big difference, and we appreciate you being here. So we are going to move on. What? What? Did I miss something? No? Okay. Okay. So we are going to move on to our discussion item about accessory dwelling units. So we just need perhaps a, do we still have a quorum? Yeah.
Four.
Do.
Would you like me to provide an overview?
Yeah, I think a member of, hi.
Hi, I just wanted to know if you received my letter, if it was part of your package.
Vivian? Yes, it is.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Bye-bye. Yeah, quick overview, please, Director Wald.
So we are once again, as a discussion item, talking about the accessory dwelling unit ordinance update, the TA 1508. I have tried to summarize it for you. I know we've seen it a lot. And, and, and we do, we did have a significant change in what we're, what we've done with this new state guidelines. And so I have given you an overview of the documents we've provided for you. I'm willing to provide those to any planning commissioner that feels that they need those in addition. So I will say this, at, at the county venture, I have been working on their accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and we talked to staff because it went last Tuesday. And I have provided for you what they're doing in the impact, Ojai traffic impact area. I've given you a map for reference on that impact area. So you can see that we're on page three of eight, we're the dark spot. That's incorporated boundaries of Ojai, and the dot, lighter dot area is this Ojai traffic impact area. I would like to say that, that they were, the planner and the county was adamant in their size limits for this area based on traffic impacts, and that was one bedroom and, and a maximum of 700, 700 square foot total floor area on parcels of one acre or more. So that is what will be in this lighter dotted area in the Ojai traffic impact area. And that's just for, uh-huh.
This is silent on properties or parcels less than one acre.
Can't have them.
Is, is anything allowed?
No. It's prohibited. It's not silent. It's prohibited. You have to have, the threshold is one acre, and once you hit one acre, then you can have a 700 square foot unit, one bedroom.
And that doesn't break state law?
I haven't asked the county council how he under, how he's going to square that with certain portions of the new second dwelling units, second dwelling unit ordinance. I think they would have an issue perhaps with regard to the provisions for Government Code Section 65852 dot two subdivision E, which speaks to the units that are fully within the existing space of an existing legal residence.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's excluded.
But I'm not sure if there's, if they've built in an exception elsewhere in their ordinance.
Yes, there's exceptions for all those in their ordinance. I didn't provide those because we're talking about outside those provisions. You know, that's, that's what, right. They, they, they've separated those out, and they've got converting of accessory space in a different area. This is for, you know, new built.
New built, new construction attached and detached, or new additions to existing structures outside existing building envelopes.
I can provide the whole ordinance.
But not garage conversions or other types of conversions of existing structures?
Right. Existing interior space, legal interior space, and existing legal garage conversions would not be subject to this county rule, as I understand it. And thus, I think the county council has less of a problem.
Right. I'm sorry, I've, you know, I didn't make that point because I thought we'd kind of gone beyond that point with what we were doing, and, and I kind of made an assumption, excuse me. But also, it should be noted that the county is wide and vast, and so this, this restriction only applies to this area. There's another one, another carve-out for the Moore Park area that has issues with sewer. So there's two areas that they carved out from their ordinance. And so anyway, back to the point that I was saying is that we provided you in the text of the staff report, the deliberations you had last time we met, we talked about this. And, and in going through that and providing that for you, it seemed to me that when we really boiled this down to where there continues to be items of discussion, it seems that there are lot size and size of unit, including number of bedrooms, it seems in going through it that we had really, or you, excuse me, had really come to a determination on most of all the other items. I will say that, so this is still a draft ordinance, and I, staff will, once we finalize that, if that happens tonight, we will bring it forward to you with environmental review for you to take action on and then send it up to city council. One of the things that we do need to do, if there's continued, continued discussion about lot coverage, there are, as I've pointed out to you previously, there are some zone districts that don't have lot coverage. So we will have to then have that discussion of where we're going with those particular zones in order for everything to tie in and integrate. And I haven't provided those for you tonight because I'm really not still sure whether we're going that direction on all zones. And so I'm waiting for the direction from you on that. And that's pretty much it. I don't think there are much changes in the matrix, except just to say, and I'm open to any corrections if anybody disagrees with that, but I believe that in listening to the minutes, that's where we are.
So minimum lot size and the size of, max size of the unit slash number of bedroom. And then with lot coverage to be either yea or nay, and then with the proviso that those zones without existing lot coverage determinations would have to be, those would have to be determined and added. Yes?
Yes. And I will say that the way the table has been divided up, and we've continued to present this way to you, is that provide you the cells of where you have the ability to regulate and where the state preamps you as far as conversion of existing interior space, conversion of an accessory dwelling building, attached accessory dwelling units. I guess as far as minimum floor area is concerned, if you, if you go down to page five of nine, at the very bottom where it says maximum floor area, we provide 1,200 square feet because that's what the city's current urgent, urgency ordinance amended the size to. But the next cell over says 1,200 square feet or 50% of the primary unit, and so that might be something too. Not only a size, but a, a ratio or a size to the main unit.
Okay.
So that would be the only other, other thing I have to add.
Okay. Okay. Shall we just jump right to minimum lot size? Anybody have any problems with that? Commissioner Jagiello?
Well, I proposed something in the past that I discussed and would like to explore in more detail. And instead of limited lot size, to use other criteria to limit the size of a guest, of a second dwelling. And the criteria would be setbacks, lot coverage, which I understand needs to be updated. Adding the condition of 50% of the size of the existing unit on all cases, not just on attached, but on detached, which will limit the size of it, and it will scale according to each piece of property. So I think if we were to go that, that route, it's very easy to make this short list of compliance items, setbacks, lot coverage, 50% rule. And anybody submitting a design would have to show those things on their design, and it'd be that simple. So that's, that was what I was proposing, and I still think it's a very feasible way to go about this.
So, I mean, I can see the merit of that idea. I see a lot of merit in it. I think it creates a lot of constraints at the same time. You know, we now have become, as we, we haven't become, we again are an island in the middle of county determination that says, because of the traffic impacts, we really think that we're going to limit this much more than we did anywhere else in the county. The rest of the county, they're down to 10,000 square feet, but they still limit it to 10,000 square feet. And I think they could go up to, could they go up to 1,200 in the rest of the county? So suddenly, we are completely different from anyplace else in the surrounding area. To me, that is counterintuitive. They did that for a reason, and they, they call it the traffic impact area for a reason. I still think that if every house in the entire valley can now have a second unit inside of it.
By right.
By right. By right. Every house. I mean, you have to meet obviously certain building and design requirements, but every house can have that. Then again, why does it not behoove us to simply err a little bit more on the side of caution, keep our minimum lot size of 10,900 for those new structures? And also, I think, implement the rest of your idea, the setbacks, 50% of the main dwelling, to preserve our open spaces and to make sure that we just, you know, it, it's potential a whole lot more building and a whole lot more second units. And again, smaller, the smaller they are, the more affordable they're going to be. So I'm still in favor of retaining the 10,900 minimum lot size and with the same provisions of 50% of the existing unit and all the setbacks.
I have a question for staff. I know we brought this up in the past. I think we said there was, what, seven new accessory dwelling units built in the last, what was it, couple years?
Say that again? Well, there, we had a little talk on this. We have, we have seven permits in the last three years, but that doesn't include the compliance ones that were still built illegally.
Exactly. And then I'm sure there's some out there that we don't even know about, you know, that are existing. And I'm wondering, do we just have a ballpark number over the last, say, five years or 10 years, if we put all those numbers together? So the legal ones, also now the new compliance units, and then maybe if we have a guess on there's some illegal ones altogether? I'm just trying to get an idea of like.
Yeah, how much volume is there?
What's the, what's the volume of, of structures that have been built over, you know, a certain time period?
Well, we could get that for you. I certainly don't know off, that off the top of my head, but I would say in order to have an act, an actual statistic that would have some merit to it, I would say that staff would have to put together not only, you know, garages and offices and guest house and second units and everything that was done, because those are all the things that became compliance, you know? So anytime anybody has something that they're, that they, we did one just, just today that was approved as an office in five years, oh, no, six years ago, and now it's a second unit, you know, I mean, that, that has happened over time. So if you want to know who was looking to build something, called it an office, and then used it as a second unit, we could probably get some statistics. But, you know, the idea that there were seven built was a little bit of a misnomer because, you know, people were building them fully intending to use them as second units, just didn't tell the city that. And that's why they, they went into a compliance program, is because they wanted those people to feel free to come in and get them legalized. So I don't know what we're trying to achieve that. If we're trying to determine where we're going in the future and how many units we're going to be going in the future, I mean, obviously, the intent is to have more. That's why they're trying to loosen up the rules, is to have more.
Right. That's, that's, that's what's in conflict, though, with what, for instance, what the county is doing. They're going in a complete opposite direction.
But the county, this has been in place.
Yeah, this has been in place. This has been placed for a long time. They're not going in a different direction.
They actually opened up their restrictions in other, not in the valley, not so much in the valley, but in other areas.
Right, but in the valley here.
Right.
Yeah. So I don't want to belabor it, but I was just trying to kind of get a general idea because I'm, I tend to be in agreement with Commissioner Jagiello, but I also hear what Commissioner Zabilla is saying, and I want more housing. I want more affordable housing. But at the same time, looking at the balance, and I, that's kind of where I'm coming from on that.
So I'm wondering if my, my fellow commissioners could just stand down for a second because we do have one person in the audience who's been waiting patiently since six o'clock. Mr. Ballard, would you?
Thank you for noticing me.
Yes.
You got me before I fell asleep. That was a good.
Yeah, I saw, I saw you going down.
Is this thing on? Yeah, it's on. Okay. Well, my name is Bob Ballard, and I live in Upper Ojai. Well, my name is Bob Ballard and I live in Upper Ojai, at 1289 Ojai Center, Paula Road. And I'm a housing advocate. I work with a nonprofit that advocates for housing for low-income people. And as you all know, there is no low-income housing in this valley. So, and I really applaud what you're doing here and what the state has done to try to bring some affordable, at least some more housing onto people's existing properties. But as you know, given the lot prices and the housing prices in this valley, a second unit of one bedroom isn't going to help a whole lot of people. You know, the rent, to rent it out and afford to build it and everything else is going to still be pretty expensive for most people. So, so, you know, I know, you know, I've been following this for a while and I know at one point the city was under a state mandate to come up with X units of affordable housing, which has gone through all kinds of iterations and, you know. So I don't know, you know, I don't know what it's going to take to do that, but you know, there's, there's lots of families in this valley, like Ray mentioned earlier on social media, that's what people use nowadays to communicate, whether we like it or not. And there's every single week on Ojai Housing and Needs page on Facebook, there's families there that are basically begging to find a place to live here. Young families with kids, people who have lived here all their lives, born here. And to me, it's just not right not to do something about this beyond, you know, fiddled with zoning regulations and setbacks. So, so, you know, one of the ways we could do this is with the community land trust. They've used community land trust in other cities and, you know, I'm not an expert on it, but it's one possible option to do that. So I just would urge the commission to try to come up with something that is more, you know, comprehensive than this, you know, small movement towards some additional units that most people that, that I'm talking about can't afford. I mean, they're living in their cars, there's people living in the woods, there's people living in the places that you said used to be offices. The reason people are doing that, because they don't have any place to live. So there's people sleeping on each, in living rooms in people's houses. So we can't solve this all overnight, obviously, but I always thought of Ojai as a compassionate community. I've been here for about 15 years. I talk weird because I came here from Boston. And so it's like, so, you know, there must be, you know, we're not the only city in this situation, but part of the reason why, and this is why it ties into larger issues too, what you do here, is that the reason the city is so attractive and why it maintained its character is because it had a diversity of people here. It had artists and musicians and it had wealthy investors and it had people all in between. And in this city and many other cities, that whole bottom half of society is disappearing. And unless we do something about to change that, it's going to go away. I mean, we have, it costs $27 an hour for someone to afford an apartment in Southern California. So, you know, I don't know about you, but not many people make $27 an hour. So that means they work two or three jobs and they get kids. And so, you know, we're really, you know, we're really in a very precarious situation here with housing. And I don't know what we can do. Like I have some ideas, other people have ideas, and this is a good step, at least it's some housing, to put on, you know, on the property. But, you know, I don't know, you know, what to do, but I just wanted to come here and try to advocate for all these people that are suffering right now. So that's why I'm here. So thank you for letting me talk. And if you have anything to ask me or talk about, I'd be happy to do that.
I would just say that, that I think, really appreciate your comments and your advocacy. And, you know, we, we, we talk about, we've talked about this issue, but ultimately this is a city council issue, what you're talking about. They would have to really empower us to, to go to that place. So I would just encourage you to also take these comments to city council and ensure...
Yeah, I'm going to do that. As a matter of fact, one of the things I would like to see happen with OTID task taxes, be used to create affordable housing. You know, you know, as other people have said, I'm going to get into that, you know, at the meeting, but, but it involves the character of the town too. So, you know, we can't maintain the place and everybody wants to come and live. And we've also got the issue of the people who work here. You know, they don't make $27 an hour. So, you know, what do they do? They live in Oxnard and take the bus up here or some crazy thing like that. And even Oxnard is becoming unaffordable for people. So, you know, we have to do something at least for the people who work here, if nobody else, because they, you know, we need them to create this economy that we all seem to like here. So, so anyway, yeah, I would, you know, if I can suggest anything, if you're interested in the community land trust, I can find out more about that, you know, there's things that we can do. But ultimately, it's going to involve some type of subsidized housing. There's no way that the private, the private sector is going to be able to create affordable housing, given the land prices and housing prices here. So, so, you know, I don't know what the answer is either, but thank you for having me.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ballard.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yeah, just piggybacking on those comments, I think that's, that's the place that I keep coming back to with these second units. I just don't see them as the vehicle for affordable housing. We're not, I don't believe we can build our way out of that problem. I think that rents have to be, affordable housing is because it's indentured. It is, it is by design, not by design, by law, it's, it's, it has to be a certain way. And I just, I think trying to build our way out of this problem is not, not the answer and is going to just add to the environmental impact without solving the problem that we have. Commissioner Nolan?
Well, and I do hear what you're saying. This is just a small portion of affordable housing. It's another option. It's not the end-all solution. And so I think, you know, what's before us tonight is this accessory dwelling unit. So I think, you know, we need to move forward on it. And I do agree that there's, there's issues. And when our housing element has come up, we've thoroughly discussed it and had information given to us. And I hope we can do more on that. But once again, I think this is just a small portion, but it is a help. Or could be, potentially could be.
Sure. Okay. So ongoing, moving, I mean, continuing to discuss minimum lot size.
This, this 10,900, that to me is, is a strange number. It's not a round number. It's slightly under a quarter of an acre. So quarter acre lots, such as they, such as they may exist in the city, are still usable for second units. But a 10,000 square foot lot, which you mentioned earlier, is one where a second unit is prohibited, it sounds like. And I'm not sure how that squares with the new state law. Maybe you could comment, sir?
Well, you see, looking in attachment A, page four of nine, the table we're all looking at, minimum lot size is only listed as a restriction in three of the five categories. We are allowed to impose minimum lot size in the other three categories. For those listening, the new state law prohibits the city from imposing a minimum lot size requirement for proposed second units inside legally existing interior space or inside a legally existing accessory structure. But if a second unit is instead proposed in a second, a new second story, or a new detached building, or else a new expansion of an existing building, in those three categories, then you have the power to impose a minimum lot size requirement.
The, the other comment that I have at the moment, may have others later, is that a 700 square foot, one-bedroom structure is, is going to, if it does anything, it will encourage single persons and couples without children, period. When my wife and I were first married, we lived in a 600 square foot apartment, one bedroom. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't have given any thought to bringing a child in to live in that same space. There's been a lot of talk over the years about the serious problem we have about declining school enrollment. Adding new housing in that category is not going to help at all. And maybe we shouldn't be looking at trying to help at all. But if that is any part of our consideration, that is the school enrollment here, then I think we need to, to err on the side of larger units that will encourage couples with children to live here in the, in the valley.
Okay. But let's stick to just lot size right now, because we're going to go down through the, I'm trying to get some kind of consensus on each...
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm just trying to order it somehow so that we can discuss, come to, you know, a majority opinion and then move on to the next thing that we can complete.
I recall seeing at some point a chart that said of lot sizes of this range, we have X amount in the city. And the next larger range, this amount in the city. I think our, we're in R01, I think, my personal residence, and, and we're less than half the size of the average lot in that zone. But there's plenty of room to do things if we wanted to. And I'm wondering how many, if we just even have a rough guess of the total number of parcels in the city, how many are excluded from second unit construction by this 10,900 limit?
But it says, as that, Mr. Summers was trying to indicate to you that that lot size is not across-the-board prohibition. So you're saying how many would be eliminated? There wouldn't be. So if you have a lot that's under 10,900 square feet in size, but you happen to have a...
It's different, yeah.
Yeah, you happen to have an accessory dwelling unit or accessory building on your property, you can convert it, correct, Matt? So you're all, there's...
If it's legal and it's existing.
If you already have it, yeah.
I think, I guess I understood Commissioner Colsey's question to be, how many lots are above and below the 10,000 nine mark in the R zones that wouldn't, would be available or not available for new accessory structures?
Right.
Yeah, I don't know.
New expansions.
Conversions, I understand, there's already something there, and I'm not even sure that conversions are part of our scope of work.
It doesn't even have to be, it doesn't have...
They're in here. They're part of this ordinance.
Yeah, but it doesn't even have to be there. I mean, you could go, is this correct, Matt, that you can go out and build an accessory building and then, and convert it later? It doesn't have to be there by a certain date.
That is correct, yes. It must be legally built with permits. You can't just throw a building up. You got to get permits and all the required process.
I could build a couple of garages on my property.
Yes, sir.
And then convert them later by right.
No, you couldn't convert them, you could convert one.
One.
One accessory.
The basic rule of this law is you get one more unit. Your allowable density plus one, not plus two or plus three.
Okay. So if the allowable density was the primary and a, and a second structure of some sort, and I'm allowed to have three?
Density doesn't test structures, density tests units.
Dwelling.
Dwelling units, which means kitchens, independent facilities for kitchen, sleeping and sanitation.
Okay.
And food production. So to finish the thought, if you had a one-acre parcel where the zoning was two units per acre, you could have two legal units, you can get one more.
Okay.
If one of those structures is a single family. If it's a duplex, if they're existing multifamily, we're in a whole other world.
Right.
So if it's, you have two separate single-family houses on a one-acre parcel, you can get one more. If it's zoned, two units per acre.
Okay.
But, but that's it. So if you had, say, so you'd have net three in that example. But if that parcel, one acre, was zoned for one unit per acre, you could only have one house, and that second house would be your second unit. And we'd look at legalizing that and you wouldn't get another one.
And, and if you're in an R zone and you have less than 10,900, then this says your allowable is just the primary, but then you get one more by right?
Primary plus one.
Okay.
And if so...
So we're not really saying that people can't have a second unit with this limit?
Well, below that. So if you're, if you're in R zone and you're 6,000 square foot lot, then it's only primary. You don't get the plus one.
No, that's not true. You could, you can convert your interior space.
Right, you can convert your interior space.
But you can't build an exterior...
You can't build a new one on top. That's the key.
No, but you're not, all I'm trying to explain to everybody is that there's still a potential for two families to be in there. This, this all-or-nothing concept is misleading. So if you have a 6,000 square foot lot and you is seeing reason to have, provide affordable housing, you can convert your garage.
Provided you meet the standards, yes.
Correct. And there, then there's a unit right there.
Right.
Even if you are under...
Oh, yeah. No, you can have, you always get plus one if it's existing interior space.
So everyone in Ojai has the ability to have a unit. They just have to make the decision. If I'm under 10,900, I can convert my garage, I can put the parking for the main unit someplace else because the law allows you to do that. I mean, there's nobody that's, there's nobody that's absolutely restricted from having one. It's a choice whether you want to take and carve out part of your own home or part of your attached or detached garage.
That's correct.
But there's always an opportunity, as we make that very clear, that...
Every house.
Every house can still have one. No, even with this limit, no one is carved out from having one.
If, if I have a small lot and I have a garage and I don't, and I don't kill the FAR or the lot coverage or whatever, can I build a second garage and then convert one?
Correct. I mean, you could.
If you made setbacks and FAR.
If I meet the rules building the second garage, then I could convert either one of them to a second unit.
Right, but the new law says that you don't, we don't, we can't require you to build a new garage. You just, you have to provide parking and it...
Parking has to be provided for a garage conversion anywhere on the lot. And if you're within one of the several five triggers for no added parking, then all you have to replace is the parking for the primary unit, not the new one space per second unit.
Okay. I have all of these Assembly and Senate bills here. And I keep trying to read them and I keep falling asleep.
Well, I think, I think maybe I can provide you for, if you want to come back next time with, with the lots and the tabulation of them, I think that's fine. I just wanted everybody to understand that every single person has an opportunity to have a unit. They might not have their druthers, they might not be able to build a detached, brand-new unit somewhere else on their property, but they do have the ability, correct.
Provided what they're converting was built legally and the setbacks are adequate for fire safety.
Correct. There are some...
There's few rules on the convergence.
But they're still by right. They're still, we're not going to make them do a permit unless it's going on the second story. That's in the thing here.
And that second story is exceeding the existing building envelope of the second story.
So I think what we're trying to explain is that if you decided that you are on a 6,000 square foot lot and you decided you wanted to convert your garage and you're within a half a mile of the transit stop in the map that I provided for you before, then you would not be providing parking for the new ADU. You would be required to offset the primary parking, which would then go somewhere in the front yard, per state law. So we're trying to paint this picture of where it can happen and what the city's going to look like if people tried to do that. And I think that's where all we're saying is that regardless of what you do with this 10,900 square foot lot, everyone does have, lots that are 10,900 have five different types of opportunities, and lots that are not, have two different types of opportunities to do it. But nobody has zero, correct, Matt?
Unless they have no legal built space.
Right.
Or their setbacks are inadequate for fire safety, or they have existing health and safety code, building code violations. There's a couple of caveats there. But it's, as you can see...
Those are very extreme, you know? That would be somebody, I mean, you know, for fire and safety, you know, there's, for fire and safety separation, there's always a way to build, you know, Chester could speak to this probably.
We've seen that in some of our...
Correct.
It can be an engineering challenge, which becomes a money challenge, but it's, engineering challenges are solvable with enough time. The key, I think, is to bear in mind that it is not a simple rule set we are forced to contend with, thanks to Sacramento's inarticulate and in lack of deft drafting. And we are looking at the reality that what used to be a simple set of rules for second units now has to be five sets of rules for five categories, given the realities that the city intends to look at some of these restrictions that differ in these situations, plus the reality that it's, the council and the commission have looked at maintaining careful control over second stories and careful control over attached, detached units. That's, hence you, you see these breakout categories.
So I'll just also add that, you know, not that anybody, you know, I just want to add more to make it all confused, but if you were going to the way that Chester, yeah, I know. If you were going the way that Chester, Commissioner Jagiello was speaking about a proportional to the, to the house that's there, et cetera, et cetera, well, the smaller the lot, the smaller the main house, the smaller the second would be, correct? I mean, just, it just trickles down from that.
That's what we're talking about.
And so if you are in a small lot, say 6,000 square feet, and you have a 25, is it 25 in the back and 20? If you have setbacks, and then you, we did this the other day, remember, last time I was here, then you have a building envelope, and then that building envelope has a house in it, and then you have to be 50% of that house, just by the way that the parameters would trickle down, that unit would probably get to be very small. I think that's why they're asking it for, to be multi-constrained. And I would be happy to give you some examples of it. I think we did that last time working when we were going for the workshop before. And I think that's why... And I think that's why, so that's all I can offer, is that I can do those things, I can provide you for that, but I just need some direction, what, what we're trying, what goal we're trying to achieve.
We're trying to finish, I think, aren't we? Are we trying to finish? Yeah, I mean, except the flies that are tormenting Chester. So, do you want us to come back to you on that, or do you...
No, no, that's, I'm just trying to understand.
No, 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 but so do you have a conclusion?
About lot size?
Mm-hmm.
No. I think everybody has, everybody has a right to a second unit of some sort.
Correct.
New, new or converted.
Right.
And there's no...
Not always new, that's the key there.
Not always new.
One or the other will be allowed wherever you are.
New or within the existing envelope of a home.
New within the existing envelope.
Yeah.
That's fine.
So you're okay with the 10,900?
It's as good as any other number, I think.
Okay. Commissioner Corbin?
I go back and forth. In terms of thinking, that's fine, and then thinking, but maybe the setbacks and the 50% is better, if it gives you more opportunities to do it in a more creative way. And I'm, I'm just not sure. I mean, I guess I'd, I'd need to look, look at some more examples and see if there's any reason not to remove the, the minimum lot size and just go with setbacks.
You still have the setback rules.
Yeah, you still have the setback rules.
And the lot coverage rules. That didn't go away with lot.
No, so I think that that, that will, that will kind of make it determination.
So you think you need more information?
Possibly. I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to say that just the setbacks will constrain it and the 50% of the primary unit.
Okay.
I have more to say on this.
Okay.
Just a couple of things that we talked about in the past. One is in the VMU district, we talked, we brought up 7,500 square feet versus 85 because we were... Can't hear me? Oh. Speaking into the mic.
That's better.
We talked in the past of the VMU going down to 7,500 because most of the inquiries in VMU were under 8,500, and so we thought that that was, that was good to do in the VMU. In my research, John Merk, Commissioner Merk supplied us a spreadsheet with all the lots and the lot sizes. I have a copy of it, he sent it to a few other people, I think Rosalie has one, and so does Kathy. And I believe, don't quote me on the exact amounts, but when I did this breakdown before, it turned out to, I think there's like 2,700 houses in, to three, to 28 in Ojai, and out of that, 950 or 10,900 square feet in larger. Yeah, so that, that was, those were the numbers approximately.
So about, about a third of the parcels...
I'd say about a third is...
Are eligible, or meet this minimum lot size.
That's what that data produced. So, and with, with that said, there's, the other element that keeps coming up that, that motivates me is, is affordable housing by design. Again, it's not affordable housing with a capital A, you know, as far as government-assisted housing, which, you know, which is needed for sure. But what this does is it, we talk about other opportunities like granny flats and things like that. You talked about families, for instance. I mean, there's, there's people, for instance, that would like to have their children live with them, and they would be fine with living in the, in their own guest house and letting their children and families live in their main house. So there's a lot of good data on, on, on these second dwellings supporting a community, a family community environment where people can, you know, take care of their parents, they can, they can, again, their children. I know I fall into that particular category. My children can't afford to live here, and so they live in Tucson, Arizona, so what? But if, there's a lot of people like that. There's no, there's no opportunities for, for our, for our children to even be here. And so there, there are those things, so there's the affordable housing element. And so with that said, if we were to go with the restricted lots, with, with adhering to the minimum lot size, excuse me, to the setbacks and the lot coverage and the 50% rule, we can also add to that, if we were concerned about overdevelopment, can we, and this is a question for Matt, can we limit the amount of permits we give for second dwellings? Can we, cannot?
No.
Okay. Well...
That's been straight up barred.
Okay, fine. Then that's off the table. That was my, was my comment on it. So I'm still at, at using that criteria and allowing that to be the criteria for people to be creative. It opens up a lot of creativity, and it naturally restricts the size of the unit. So, I'm done.
Commissioner Nolan?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm leaning towards the, using our setbacks, lot coverage, and then the 50%, so that we have that, once again, that leeway. And Commissioner Colesy brought something up, and I know we, I've brought it up in the past too, and that's the opportunity to have some more housing that could potentially be larger because of families that we would like to encourage staying here, coming here, and being part of our community. So I'd, I'd like to see the, the range as far as the house or the accessory dwelling unit size. And so not to just have it limited as a small size, I'd like to see it go up to the 1,200 square feet and not be a limit. And once again, the lot size, the setbacks and all that is going to dictate, so not every property is going to get to do it, and that's, it's going to be limiting, but I think that's the way to go.
I would, I would agree that, I'm not in favor of a 50% rule because it's going to mean that more places are going to be too small for families than we might want, or that the property owners might want to build. And if the state has already decided that 1,200 is an okay maximum size, at least 1,200, I've, my family lived in two houses I can think of that were less than 1,200 square feet with three children. And it's cozy, but it works. But at, at 50% of a 2,000 or smaller square foot house...
It's a thousand square foot.
Yeah, a thousand square feet or, or less, you're getting down into that range where you're going to exclude families with children. And I'd rather just leave the 1,200. We still have lot size, we have lot coverage, and we still have setback requirements. And I think if we meet all of those, then why not let people build as much as the state allows?
We haven't gotten to the square foot yet.
Well, we kind of, we kind of slid down the page to...
But that's what I'm saying, once we get there, now we're going to debate the size again, and then when you just start debating the size, then you got the, all these equations. And again, I, I don't want to, you're going to be back at, well, are we really agreeing to 1,200 square feet? Or are we going to bring it to our existing ordinance or the county's 700? See, you're, you're assuming that we're already going to agree on 1,200.
No, I'm, I'm not. I'm advocating it, but everything between minimum lot size and minimum floor area is, as set forth in the zoning. So I don't know that we're going to have a lot of...
So, so that's fine if, so are you saying that you still are fine with your original comment to adhere to the 10,900 square foot minimum lot size, but you would like to see up to 1,200 square feet, given that it meets the setbacks in lot coverage?
Exactly right.
Okay. Fine. Commissioner Powers? Why don't you try to stick to lot size right now and then, well, it's fine if you want to segue into something else, but I'm just trying to focus the discussion so we actually close the loop.
No, my mind has already done all the segues, so I don't need to say them. I don't know, I'm like six of one, half and a dozen of the other on lot size. I, I... I don't think a 1,200 square foot... Maximum is even a small A in the affordable housing for a family that needs housing. If the state law was created to create affordable housing with both a capital and a small A, I think the 50% might achieve that better. In terms of the lot size... I'm a little confused on my choices there.
So any house...
You all have confused me.
Any, any house, anywhere in the valley can, by right, have a second unit.
Right.
If it's designed properly, contained within the existing envelope of the house.
Yes.
Or can also be put into an existing accessory building by right.
Yes.
So any house or any accessory building in the valley can have that, can have a second unit. So then it becomes, right now, our existing, what still remains, what could still remain of our existing ordinance is a 10,900 square foot minimum for the R zones, of which we have 1,000 lots, approximately 1,000 lots, that would meet that criteria, 1,000 different parcels. And then we have always talked about, and Chester is right about this, I think we've always talked about dropping the minimum square footage on the VMU to 7,500. So I think there's still loads of opportunity to build within those parameters, tons. But what these guys are, what some people are saying is, you build respecting the existing setbacks and no more than 50% of the primary unit.
In lot coverage.
In lot coverage.
The 7,500 is a standard 50 by 150 lot. And I'm curious if you, if you happen to know, in changing this minimum from 8,500 to 7,500, do we actually make any more lots?
Yes.
Available?
According to Sherry, she brought that information up at one of our, one of these meetings, and she's, she had taken applications and had refused many applications that were denied based on that 8,500 that could have qualified.
Then I would be in favor of lowering that limit, yeah.
It's, it's really just a way of putting some kind of a constraint on, it's, it's, I don't know, to me it's, well, I guess constraint's the word. There's tons of opportunities. In my opinion, there's tons of opportunities to build, given this picture. I mean, at what point do we consider impacts?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about impacts. I'm a little concerned about density and impacts and which option will create the least. I get everyone can build. I understand that.
And second unit does not affect the density by state law, right?
Yeah, that's correct. That's, that's what we were talking about earlier in terms of...
Not the real density.
Your base density plus one, the second unit is the plus one, or now, as the state calls them, accessory dwelling units.
Right.
So, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Now, we have two categories that have the 50% of the primary unit. And are you recommending putting that on everything?
Yes.
Okay.
It makes sense for architectural scale. If you think about it from a developer's standpoint, that's why, if you have those parameters, it, it just guarantees that it scales correctly. And that's what you really have to understand. You see, if you have the setbacks, lot coverage, and then you have the 50% rule, it's going to scale and be appropriate for every size lot. So if you have a 6,000 square foot lot, you include all the setbacks, you have a 1,000 square foot house on there, the maximum you can do is 500, but with all those other conditions in there, you might be down to the minimum of 200. You know, that minimum, whatever, I think we have a minimum of 220. I don't know what our minimum is, but...
I believe it's 250 is the minimum.
What if, what if you had a larger lot with tiny house on it?
It will, the larger lot will dictate what you can do on it. You can choose to do a smaller house anywhere you want. You don't have to go up to the square footage. You can choose, you can go up to 1,200. Let's say you have an acre lot.
Well, let's say you had an 11,000 square foot lot. So you're saying that that lot size would not be required to be 50% of...
No, yes, all lots would be 50% of the dwelling. So like at Persimmon Hill, for instance, the average is 3,000 plus square foot. So they're going to meet the minimum requirement on every guest house. Right now, it's only 700. Oh no, 650.
640.
But what I'm saying is if the lot is bigger and it only has a 900 square foot house on it, can we build the second one as a new, as the primary and make the little one?
That's a very, that's a very rare situation, and I think that would be something that you would bring up.
Would that, would that be able to get a variance?
No, not a variance, it's, it's, you just decide the other one is the primary.
Is the primary, okay.
Mr. Fisher's doing that on his property.
Right.
He's building the primary, and the one that exists out there right now is very small, and that will become the second unit.
Okay.
That's, that's...
The trick to, to note on that one is that what accomplishes in that case, Commissioner Corbin, is you don't get that new house necessarily by right. It may be by right if it's single-story residential, depending on what's being built, but you would need the permits for it as a new primary unit. The existing small house becomes a new, a new second unit, and then you build a new primary unit. But you may not be able to get it through the second unit ordinance. It may still be by right if it's a single-story residential, but that'll depend on the exact facts.
So you couldn't just get that at the counter, is that what you're saying?
No. Again, depending on the exact facts, but certainly, anytime you're coming in to build a new house, it's more than just a improved immediately type permit. Whether it's by right or not by right, it takes a little bit of time to review.
So I'm very clear on Vice Chair Jaglioz's concept of this. I want to hear from Chair Zabilla, so I want to hear your, I want you to argue your case so I get yours as clear, as clear as Chester's is.
Well, I just think that we are making a decision without really understanding the implication, the environmental impacts, the environmental implications of our decision, because we don't know how many are going to be built. But if we say every house can have a second unit, every house with an accessory structure can have a second unit by right, why doesn't, it just seems to behoove us to be a little bit more conservative when we have another 1,000 lots out there that could also have a second unit by right? Why wouldn't we just somewhat err on the side of being conservative when the county has already said you're in a traffic impact zone, when everybody's screaming about the traffic, when suddenly you don't have to park any of these structures and you have all of these cars on the street where kids play and run out between cars, and the streets are choked? I just think, why not try, to me, that's the balance, rather than just, I mean, I agree with, with Commissioner Jagiello that it definitely makes sense from a building and design point of view, and I like, I like the nat, the inherent constraints in that. I think it's a good idea. But I just think this is, just air, we should err a little bit more on the side of protecting our open space and our environment. That is also what we are supposed to be doing. And I just think that if we open it up that much, then everything can just really be built. I mean, I've talked to other Realtors about this, they don't, you know, the Realtors that I've talked to also think that we should maintain this minimum lot size because people come here because they want this, they want some open space. They don't want something that's so built out that they're suddenly no longer in a country rural environment, they're just, everything's built. So how do we find that balance? I think this is the balance. It's, states handed down very stiff requirements, everybody can have one, why not?
We're still on minimum lot size.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Do we, do we need to go through a process of making motions and voting on them?
No, but I think we have to come to either, you know, we have to, we don't all have to, it doesn't have to be unanimous, but I think we have to have,
A consensus of sorts.
A consensus of sorts, you know, whether it's a dissenting view, so that's, so I think we got to say one or two, either the, one is the 50% plan and two is the.
Whoa. That's down here.
No. Well.
She's summarizing, she's summarizing here.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm saying.
There's two plans on the table, two general ideas on the table.
And one of which, if I could perhaps add a comment, the first plan is to delete the line, delete the entire row for minimum lot size and leave in place, this is Commissioner Jagiello's plan, and leave in place setbacks, lot coverage, and that's it.
And to add the 50%.
And add then, as part, right, and add is the max floor area, the 50% requirement in all five categories.
All of that in lieu of the minimum lot size.
Exactly. And then the other proposal, Chair Zabilla's proposal is to maintain as existent the minimum lot size line.
Okay.
In addition to the rest of it, is that, that's how I see it.
Yeah.
If, if we were voting, I would vote for 10,975 in the VMU.
Okay. Bobby, last chance. Okay, Commissioner Jagiello, I understand your view. Commissioner Nolan?
I would go with the, using the setbacks, the lot coverage and the 50%.
Okay. Commissioner Powers?
I would go with the 10,900 and the 7,500 in the VMU.
Okay.
There's a tiebreaker.
What was your vote?
Didn't I argue my point well enough to make that clear?
No, she's, she's the tie maker, right, she could push it over the edge.
Well, I understand you're putting the 50% on everything, but I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that, so I think I might prefer the minimum lot size.
Okay, that, and I'm sure it will be reflected at City Council that it was not a slam dunk, so.
And you'll have the further opportunity to confirm everything through a single final vote on the draft ordinance.
Okay, of course.
But this will give us our direction for what we draft.
Okay.
But our, one question though, are we, is 10,900 the number on, on the Zabilla plan? That's, that's the question. And the 7,500?
7,500 for VMU.
Is, so is that, everybody's concurs with that?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, so, size of the unit slash the bedroom, number of bedroom, do we?
Well, my understanding is, what Matt just said was that you, you had consensus that you wanted the 1,200 square feet maximum, provided that you meet all the setbacks, blah blah, and 50% of the main structure. And you said in addition, you wanted the lot size, so I don't hear any, anybody objecting to that. Is there somebody that objects to that?
Size of the unit, like what's the max size of the unit, you're saying up to 1,200?
You're saying 1,200, but you can only be 50% of, and you have to meet all the other requirements. That's what I heard.
That's, from an architectural standpoint, that makes the most sense.
Right.
In most cases, is not to have the second dwelling be 50% bigger, or more than 50% bigger than the main dwelling.
More than 50% of the main dwelling.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I would agree with all of that except the 50% part.
Me too.
I, I, I'm all in favor of the lot coverage limits and the setbacks, but I don't think we should restrict it to 50% of the primary unit, because that may be very small.
Well, yeah, there would have to be a gutter to it, you know, because you have to be able to do some unit. So if you're going to say 50%, and you're, you know, it would have to be at least an efficiency unit, correct, Matt?
Yes, which is a minimum of 250 square feet.
Well, there is some discussion on that, you know, I've asked the building official on that issue, and then, and then there's something, because it's in there as an efficiency unit. So rather than put it in as a square footage, I'd rather just leave it as an efficiency unit, because the state seems to be moving smaller all the time. Because if you put 250, that precludes anybody from going into what they quote unquote tiny home, whether it's on wheels or it's not on wheels, you know. So I'd rather just leave it efficiency, but there is a gutter to it, you know, you are entitled to have the efficiency unit.
Right. The state HCD talks about junior ADUs too, which I haven't seen anywhere except in this memo.
Junior ADUs are an optional requirement for, optional, option for cities to do. We haven't been looking at that as of yet, but certainly we can put that on the planning commission's radar. And a junior ADU, for those who haven't got to the back of their technical assistance memorandum handout, passed out several times ago, a junior ADU is a facility that is separate living, but not necessarily separate sanitation and kitchen. In other words, just straight up running out of bedroom.
Okay, well, that's for another day.
So I will just say that if you choose not to go with the 50%, it would be nice if we had some parameters, maybe staff can draft something, or maybe Matt can, to come back with how you identify the primary unit from the ADU unit, because the ADU unit has different rules and regulations, the primary unit still requires you to provide parking. And if the primary unit is 800 square feet and the ADU is 1,200 square feet, it becomes very difficult going forward for staff to understand which unit requires what, because somebody's going to say, well, you built that as an ADU, oh no, then we've already incurred, we've already had this happen in, in the department with, with the compliance units. People are claiming that, well, that's, that was the primary unit, no, that was the primary unit.
So, okay, so, so we haven't gone all the way around anyway, we've had two people say, so, so that's one of the, one of the reasons why you would do it. Is it just simple?
Add the 50%.
Add the 50% ratio, because it, and, and remember, we're, we're talking about 50% in the context of the size of the unit, how high up we can go. It's not assumed to be 1,200, that's, that's what we're talking about. What, what Commissioner Jagiello, I believe, is saying is let them go to 1,200 square feet with the provision of it being where appropriate, by, defined by 50% of the main. Primary unit, especially knowing that if you have a teeny tiny house and you have the ability to, you know, you can build, potentially build something else to make the teeny tiny house be the second unit. But otherwise, it does create confusion, I think, that can be circumvented by this, this plan. But we still have, what we're really deciding is it, this is two, this has turned into two issues. The percentage, the percentage is really secondary to the max lot size. So, does, does. My, no, that, we can still limit the, the max lot size, I mean, the max.
Unit size.
The building size, the building size, not the lot size, cannot change.
I mean, I, I, I would prefer to go with setbacks, lot coverage. I'm uncertain about the 50%. But we've already got it on two instances already, it's just these other three.
That was my point.
Make it uniform. But we're, but we're talking, Bobby, about the max unit size. And how, and then how we get there.
How do you come up with a formula?
Do you come up with a formula, and how do you come up with a formula? So we're really talking now about lot, unit size. How big is the max size of the unit? Commissioner Quilisi thinks they should be 1,200. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it doesn't matter then, which one is the primary and which one is the accessory, you get to build 1,200 square feet, period.
Okay.
That's, that's about as simple a rule as you can have.
Okay.
Up to 1,200.
Up to 1,200.
Up to 1,200, right.
Okay, that's Commissioner Quilisi's view. So, we're talking, so, so what Commissioner Jagiello, I think, is saying is that he thinks that you should be able to allow up to 1,200 square feet, up to 1,200 square feet, constrained by setbacks and the 50% rule. Okay, so you can come up with a lesser unit size, you, you can obviously agree with that, you can come up with, you know, Commissioner Quilisi is saying only, you know, up to 1,200 square feet, bar none, no, no constraints.
Well, except for these two.
Always except for these two that are already, you know, constrained. They're already constrained, the, the new attached, the new attached dwelling accessory unit and the new attached dwelling unit by conversion of interior space. Those are apparently constrained by the 50% rule, but we're talking about the other three.
But why are they constrained by the 50%?
I think that's.
Is that something the city did?
That's the state law, no, that's state law.
Is that the state law?
That's my understanding.
That was what was adopted with the, the urgency ordinance, I think with regard to these categories, the one for new attached accessory dwelling, which is the second column in.
Yep.
I think that one, if you wished, you could set that smaller than 1,200. What's here is what was adopted with the urgency ordinance. Before we had HCD giving us any guidance.
So this whole row is actually a result of the urgency ordinance?
Um, not all of it, part of it.
But the 50% came from the state law.
Right. And, and what this, what the urgency ordinance did is we adopted it to be exactly what the law says, which is the total floor space of an, of a new detached unit can exceed 1,200 square feet. And the total floor space of an, of a attached accessory, of a attached unit, attached to existing building can exceed 50% of existing living area with a max increase of 1,200. So the urgency ordinance adopted those exact standards. Then the state's guidance came down and clarified some ambiguities in the law and said, no, you aren't bound, you aren't completely bound by those, you can set it at that, or you could set it lower if you wished. So I think you can make these lower than.
But not the 50%.
Yeah, I remain confused.
I think you can make that smaller too.
Is 50% of the primary unit?
Although, consider whether that's useful.
Part of the state law, or is it something we did locally?
No, only on.
It's in both.
On those two, just on those two?
Yes.
It's both in the state law and was adopted by the council, with the urgency ordinance.
So it's part of the emergency ordinance?
Yes.
But he's saying that he thinks that we can change all, can, can change both those parameters.
Correct. I think you can change all of it if you want to make it smaller. If you, well, more accurately, you recommend it, the council, council can change it.
Correct, okay, so I.
Okay, but, but the 50% of the primary unit is in the state law?
Yes. There's another section that allows the city to set different standards.
So why argue about whether we should have an absolute 1,200 if the state law already says 50% of the primary?
Because another section of the code allows the city to change that rule. In other words, that's the default standard, but this.
Restrictive than the state.
I think, as HCD has articulated, the city could also go more restrictive, provided you make, you don't make it impossible to build an efficiency unit.
Right, no, I understand, I understand the city can be more restrictive.
And you also can be less restrictive.
But you can be less restrictive than the state law?
Yes, because there's another section that allows the city to be less restrictive. As I said, it's not a paragon of clarity in drafting.
Just plain 1,200 is still in play, that's within our power to recommend.
Well, that's what you did recommend.
And that's what the council previously adopted, partly because we, that was done quickly before we had HCD's reinterpretation of its own, of its own law.
So, gee, I think you're still in the same position though, I think you still, okay.
But it's now an allowed position.
Well, it was never not allowed, I mean, it was never unallowed. Because it was passed by, by this emergency ordinance, so. So.
My preference is setback and lot coverage. My question is the 50. Well.
We're, we're talking about.
I understand that that might be excessive on some lots.
Yeah, that goes again, counter to what your point is, if you're allowing 1,200 square foot houses on.
That proportionally, the 50% would probably be better.
You're overdeveloping property in areas where you could squeeze a 1,200 square foot into a lot that only has a 1,600 square foot house there.
I'm not doing that.
No, I'm just saying that that's what that, that's what's recommending, and that's where the 50% rule kind of changes, is it controls, it, it, well, I think it just scales it correctly, that's the point. It doesn't get people to build this, you know, pretty much a duplex on their property. I mean, there's plenty of properties that have big enough houses to justify the 1,200 square feet, you know, so it's, it's, in most cases.
Those are never in question.
Yeah, so, but not, well, they are now, because you can only build 650 square feet in Persimmon Hill, which is really inconvenient for a lot of people there.
Well, no, now you, no.
Because you have the emergency. No, 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 now you can, but it's existing, you know.
In the past.
In the past. So now they're allowed to do their 1,200 square foot house, and it's appropriate there, because they have the space and it's all there. But scale is really important to control development, if you're concerned about development and, and overbuilding and scale and density and all those things.
I'm, I'm not in favor of something 1,200 square feet, but I, I would go with that, with this 50% provision.
Okay, I'll go with that too.
Okay.
That's my position too, I think it makes sense.
Okay.
And that's my position also.
Okay, Mr. Powers?
Yes, I would go with 1,200 square feet and 50%. I do want to bring up a conversation we had, and I forgot who did the math. We took, did an example, remember where, where I wanted to crunch numbers and we took the setbacks and the lot size and it was like a 6,000 square foot lot or something, and just from the constraints of what were there, it wasn't going to be that big of a building they could build anyway.
Well, that was the, why I was proposing, what my, my, my plan was, it would control that and, and condense that naturally without everyone having to contort about it, it would just be a formula.
Okay, making progress. Okay, so I think we have consensus, sorry, Commissioner Quilisi. So.
One thing.
So I think the lot coverage is the last thing, and I think we're, I think we've been sort of talking about lot coverage all along as being part and parcel of this vision, that we would also be respecting lot coverage. So we'll, we'll take a quick poll on that, but lot coverage with the idea that we need to make determinations for those zones that don't have a lot coverage requirement. So, Commissioner Quilisi, are you in favor of respecting the existing lot coverage numbers?
The ones that exist, I, I think it's 50% right now.
Well, no, I don't think it's that high, I think it's, it varies.
We don't have lot coverage requirements throughout the city.
That's what I just said, and so we would need to make a determination, subsequent, a subsequent determination of that.
35%?
35 is pretty common, a 35% lot coverage.
And, and some areas of the city, some zoning.
Yeah, VMU is the 50, isn't it?
Have no lot coverage restriction maximum or minimum.
Right, but we have talked about, there, that's correct, and I think we've decided that we would impose a lot coverage on those that don't have them. Not tonight, not tonight.
Not tonight.
With further information, we would have to get more data about that to make a reasoned point.
I'm willing to wait until we, until we see the numbers.
Okay, but would you go?
Before we come to a decision on lot coverage.
Okay, so then, all right, so, hmm, so what happens?
You just said we're not going to decide it tonight.
What I would like to have is consensus of whether or not you want, so right now there's lot coverage in many of the zone districts, and the consensus of the commission has always been you adhere to that. The question is, and for those lots that are not covered with lot coverage, are you going to direct staff to go, come up with a lot coverage, because before you kept on saying lot coverage for every lot, and then I kept on saying, but some don't have them.
Right.
Okay, and so all I'm trying to do is make sure that we don't write an ordinance as a hole in the middle of it that you're unaware of.
So we're going to decide if, if, if we think it's, if we think it's appropriate for all of the lots that already have it, which there are many, do we not think that it would be appropriate for those that don't?
Okay, in that case, yes, I would be in favor of having some lot coverage rule for all parts of the city, but reserve judgment on exactly what that rule would be, zone by zone.
Okay, perfect. Lot coverage, Bobby?
I agree with that.
Okay, Commissioner Jagiello? Commissioner Nolan? Commissioner Powers?
I agree.
Okay, so I think, I think, thank you, yes?
I just have, I'm sorry, I just have one other thing is that, and we're, Matt and I working on the ordinance, one of the things that we can't do is we can't put in the permeable or water efficient or any of those things for the just, the, correct me if I'm not wrong, if I'm not right on this, Matt, for just the second unit, because the law really wants them to be applicable to the primary as well. them to be applicable to the primary as well, to not have something carved out.
It's holistic to the parcel, you're saying.
They don't want special constraints for second units that aren't on the primary unit. So I know there was talk about doing water-wise things, et cetera, et cetera, but we have to come back with those on all the primary units, correct, Matt? That's how I understand it?
In other words, you'd have to adopt some sort of, a standard of that type to be applicable to all residential properties, to pick up second units. You can't adopt something like that that's applicable just to second units.
So I didn't forget what you had said. I did not ignore it. We need to come back and have that on all residential units, whether it's the amount of permeables space that, or permeable covering, water filters back down through, all those things that you had asked me to look at, those need to come in and be for those, for, yes, so I just wanted to let you know that I didn't forget you.
Can I clarify that for a minute? So if someone builds an ADU and the washer and dryer, clothes dryer are outside under an awning, because they have their own, and they run gray water out, you're saying if they're required to do that gray water, then the primary residents as well would have to be under that same regu-
No.
No, what, what is being said is that the city can't require gray water washers and dryers solely for ADUs. It's about what the city has a power to require, not what the person is doing.
They could require it for new construction, but not specifically for ADUs?
Exactly. If the council chose, the council could require gray water systems, gray water laundry systems for all new residential construction, which would pick up ADUs, but you couldn't impose a requirement solely on ADUs. If a homeowner independently of the city's regulatory power chose to install a gray water laundry system for their ADU in compliance with the plumbing code and other applicable permits, they wouldn't then be forced to make the primary unit also use gray water, because they wouldn't be required by the city's regulatory power to impose, to, to adopt that gray water system. Does that clarify the point you're making?
It does, thank you.
Before we get off this entire page-
Yeah.
I did have-
Darn it.
One, one thing that I wanted to ask the, the city attorney about-
Sure.
This emergency ordinance, or urgency ordinance, excuse me. I was present at the city council meeting where that urgency ordinance was passed, and my recollection is that you came to the council, and I'm not criticizing anything that was done. You said, "The following are the changes that we have to make in the, in the municipal code to avoid having all of our provisions rendered, rendered void."
Right.
Or words to that effect. What I'm curious about is what's left in, in the municipal code in this particular topic area that, that was not changed by the emerg, that was not changed by the urgency ordinance? Or is everything in this topic area in the municipal code now consistent with the state law?
The current code is fully consistent with state law. The current code has, on this section in this category, max floor area, which is the same thing as max unit size, the current requirement in the code built, adopted by the urgency ordinance is a maximum of 1,200 square feet, or 1,200 square feet for new detached units.
Yeah.
And 1,200 square feet or 50% of the existing primary unit size, whichever is smaller, for new attached units. This, the current code doesn't have the five categories. It just has the two categories.
It's in their packet, Matt.
Oh, it's in the packet, thank you. It's on page, um-
Attachment C.
Thank you, attachment C.
Attachment C, okay.
And you see this reflected in subsection, page one of four of attachment C, standard C1 picks this point up. And the built-in exception, of course, is these interior conversions. So at the moment, what we have is legal, and thus the whole thing isn't preempted.
Okay, okay. On that C1, since you have brought it up, it says inclusive of any basement and attic. Those seem like very precise terms, but may not be. I have attics in my house, because the roof is steep, where we can walk around and store things, but in previous homes that I've lived in, there was an attic, but it was not something that you could stand up in, in places you couldn't even crawl in it. Are they both attics? And is the square footage of that area counted for purposes of calculating the 50%?
It's going to pick up any conditioned basement or conditioned attic, or an attic or basement sufficient to accommodate a person. And we would refer back to the building code's definitions, or the general zoning code's definitions, which I have in front of me here.
And so, so in that case, attic and basement refers specifically to conditioned space, and it's not required to put that, that-
No, that's not true.
Descriptive in here?
I don't think it has to be conditioned.
That's not true, it says, I can read them for you, in your, on page two of nine, it says habitable space, an area within a building designed for general living, sleeping, eating, or cooking purposes. It is not necessary that a room or an area be finished in order to be considered habitable space. So that's what the definition is that you guys are all approving.
Where are you reading?
Two of nine.
Which, which?
In the matrix, in the matrix.
Attachment A?
Yeah, thank you, attachment A. These are the, these are the definitions that we went through previously.
Oh, he's pointing to the, the current code that doesn't refer to habitable space.
Mm-hmm, he's asking about, but I, but all I'm saying is-
Oh, I see your point, it's living area, which does include interior habitable area, including basements and attics, but not garage or et cetera, et cetera, so-
It still doesn't define basements and attics, I'm sorry.
Right, I'm just saying, this is what we have right now. It doesn't specifically say it has to be conditioned. This is the definitions, if you want it in there, we should change those definitions and put it in there. Now's the time to change it.
The proposed, the working draft-
Mm-hmm.
Also does not define either basement or attic, and it says nothing to the issue of conditioned space.
Well, I think, I think-
That's why I'm asking.
I'm, I'm fine to come back with a definition of those. That's why I'm, I, I don't disagree with you. I'm just trying to tell you where they, they are in this and what they are defined as. Because we've gone through all the definitions before, and I asked if there was any others that you wanted me to put in.
And I'm sorry, I didn't ask for an-
So do you want- No, 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 it's fine, so would you like me to provide, is that consensus of everybody that you'd like basement defined and attic defined?
Yes, well, the-
It affects his 50%.
Well, by code, there are some restrictions, head height, you know, height is one of the restrictions, so attics that don't have adequate head height don't qualify.
So my question would be, where is that in here?
Right, she has to-
Right, and so, you know, an attic-
Built into the definition of design for general living, it's built into the habitable space definition at the moment. But that doesn't mean we don't have to stick with that, there's no reason we can't, just straight add a definition.
I understand that, but habitable space does not appear in C1 either.
It defines it as living area, which goes back to one or more provisions of the general building code. And we're admittedly making it clear with the new ordinance.
Okay, we have living area here, we have living area here, which references interior habitable area, okay.
And both of those terms are taken from the code.
Chain of custody.
Right, and you see why we're trying to do this as a non-urgency ordinance with the time, so it sounds like we should add a definition of attic and basement.
Yes, for sure.
I, I, yeah, and I don't, I don't want to be a pest about this, I just want to make sure that what we do is legal.
No, no.
No, I think you're looking for the holes, and that's what we want you to do.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Powers?
I can't think of a better time to bring this up. It's under lot coverage, and I really want to read this just for those watching at home and listening. In the last meeting, I asked about, you know, can, on a large lot size, can three smaller units be built? So if you have an acre, half acre, can you put, you know, examples, three, 300 square foot small homes and I, a cluster housing? And, and currently, we cannot. So I just, I just want to say it for the record for those at home, in terms of lot coverage, Mr. Summers said that it's not in compliance with the general plan to have a family compound, compound or cluster housing, because the zoning, our current zoning ordinance doesn't address that.
I'm sorry to interrupt, that's not, there's some nuance that's missing in that that may not have been captured in the minutes.
Okay.
It would depend on the exact facts of a property. In other words, whether, so I'm seeing this is, you're reading from page six of eight.
At the bottom, yes.
What you cited would depend on the zoning of the large lot. My statement that that would be, not in compliance of the general plan, presumes that that large lot is zoned for one or two units.
Okay.
So it's, it's all independent on the underlying zoning. Unless, of course, we add a provision, as I think you're asking for, we add a provision that would be allowing this kind of plus two, plus three, plus four, cluster housing-type approaches, which is within the, the city's power, provided the commission and the council do so, and rewrite the general plan as needed.
Yeah, so that, that would be changed in the density within the general plan. No, I know it's a different discussion, but I, I wanted to insert that for those at homes, because I, I've had a lot of feedback, and people come up on the street to talk to me, you know, can we build several homes? Can we make some affordable houses that are smaller as transitional homes for people who have just gotten here and getting on their feet, or people have lost their jobs? Like that, so, the large, A, affordable housing, and how can we address that other than subsidized housing? So that's why I wanted to read that and put that on the record. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, can we, it's getting late, I'm getting hangry.
Move to page six?
Sure, that's-
Number of units?
No, well, number of units, well, we're constrained, we can have two, two units.
Two units.
But we're not, you know, general plan, unless we come, you know, yeah. So I think that those were the only things that I think were still up for discussion, were they not? Did we not decide that at the beginning? Okay, so is this clear for staff, what we've decided? Okay, are we clear that we're clear and that we have a recommendation, but for definitions for basement and attic? Yes?
I think so.
Okay, moving on. Good job. Okay. Did you want to say something about that particular thing? Or do you want to save your comments till? Okay, thank you.
And you'll have an opportunity to question the council meetings.
Yeah, you will have a couple opportunities there, I'm sure. Okay.
You're done.
We're done with our list, okay. We're going on to our future agenda items.
So we're preparing, as we speak, for April 5th, 601 Pearl Street, which is a tentative map, plan development, design review permit, tree permit. And that's a pretty substantial project, and then we'll be coming back, I guess, if time allows, with the ADU ordinance.
That brings up, I got a mail packet on this project. Did everyone else get that, too? What was that about? I got a-
I'm sorry, what?
I got a mailing packet with all this whole project, all the plans, everything in it, and all its specs and everything.
Who sent it to you?
I, the city of Ojai.
It was from the city.
So I, I just was wondering what- Sure it was from the city? I'm absolutely sure. They could have, but I, I got it, you got it, right? And you got it?
You got it just this week?
No, no, about, about four weeks ago.
Yes, well, that's the environmental document.
Okay, that's what it was, that's all I was asking, what that was.
Yeah, I was like, okay, yes, so they gave you everything that went out for public review, the, I don't know, I'm not sure why, but that's what it was done, was giving you so that you knew what went out to the general public as far as the initial study, you had the initial study in it? I assume?
It did, yes.
Yes.
But I just was wondering, I never got anything mailed to me before.
No, I never got anything.
So it's like, hmm.
Okay, yeah.
And just to note for the record, the copies of what was mailed to the planning commission, which are the, the initial study and mitigated negative declaration provided for public comment, are available for review by the public at the community development department counter. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Director Walt?
I think that's it.
Okay. We have brief reports on, is this unbrief? Because I'm getting, and I'm getting hot, too. City Council of February 28th, Commissioner Powers. No.
Go to the next person.
No, it's not that, it's just, it should be short enough to, okay, so I'll-
Long time ago.
Okay.
There's a lot of water under that bridge. I'm booting my phone.
Okay, Commissioner Quillisi, would you like to jump ahead to March 14th?
Sure, I'd love to do that.
Okay.
March 14th, yesterday, last night-
Last night.
Was an exciting series of discussions and two separate meetings of the city council. The first at 6 o'clock-
Technically, that was not a council meeting, it was a public demonstration.
I, I don't mean to misspeak.
And none of the five members of the council spoke in congregation at that meeting, they were all in separate groups, and no more than two per council.
Okay, there, there was a gathering at 6:00 PM yesterday that was, that was noticed and noticed as a leaf blower demonstration, okay? It actually consisted of demonstrating two very small electric leaf blowers and a wide variety of vacuums, and both a small and a large street sweeper. It was right out here, there were four different surfaces, that, that is, the street, the gravel walkway, plain dirt and grass, that all had been supplied with leaves to be picked up or whatever. All, they just spread the leaves out for the demonstration, okay? All but, all but the latter, the two, the two street sweepers, in, in my opinion, kicked up a lot of dust, at least as much as blowers would normally, leaf blowers, and were generally greater than 80 dBA, that verified by Bill Miley, who was standing around with an acoustic meter. Okay, and so that was the end of the demonstration. I'm glad to bring such pleasure to the commission.
That is why I asked for a new demonstration.
Yeah. And, and as a follow-up to that, I'll get back to that topic as we get to the end of the 7 o'clock gathering, which I think was a normal, regular meeting of the city council.
Yes.
Do I have to go back to Mr. Powers for a more, anyway?
Just a couple of things that occurred early in, in the regular meeting. Randy Haney noted that, while Angelo wasn't here to talk about water again, that the lake has, in the last 30 days or whatever, since we've had the big rains, has gained about a year's usage of water. So we've gone from 89,000 acre feet to 111,000 acre feet, which is about what's been used up every year at the lake. And 26 inches of rain downtown, 30 inches in the back country. So they pushed off the, the apocalypse of the Cat Five restricting everyone to 50 gallons of water a day, or whatever, by about six months. Okay, then we went, we basically went on to the big item of the day, which was leaf blowers in general. There, there was an existing motion that had been brought back to council, at council's direction by staff, which said, "We're going to ban all leaf blowers of any sort, anywhere in the city with a one-year transition," to get, finally get rid of them all. And there were, there were nearly 30 speakers, myself among them. Of those, I think, I counted 28 speakers. Of those, there were eight who were against the ban, period, just flat against the ban. There were nine that were for the ban, the ban being defined by the motion that staff had brought forward, but of those nine, two suggested compromises as they finished their discussion. And there were 11 who began by saying, "We need only a partial ban or some other sort of compromise." a partial ban or some other sort of compromise." So the, my rough counting was that at least two-thirds of the people who took the time to speak to the council were against an outright ban. But we never got to it. By the time we were all done with all of those, then Councilman Blatts made a motion to allow low noise gas and electric blowers, but low noise, that term being undefined, I think, in his motion, to be used between 9:00 and noon, Monday through Friday, by commercial users, and 9:00 to noon, Monday through Saturday or maybe Sunday, it wasn't absolutely clear, by homeowners using the blowers personally. Okay. Then Mayor Johnston came up with what the city attorney called a substitute motion. Before there was complete discussion or any vote on, on Councilman Blatts' motion, the substitute motion came up to, one, table the Blatts' motion, and I've never heard of this in Robert's rules, but I defer to the expertise of the city attorney, to do a good demo, not like the one that we had, and, and to allow up to six months to accomplish that demo, and also have citizen input on both sides of the, of the ban question. And it was not clear with whom they would work, but certainly with council members.
One.
One or more.
Only two.
Oh, the ma, oh, it was the mayor-
The motion was very specific on that. It was a committee, subcommittee was set up of just two council members, the Mayor Johnston and Councilmember Blatts.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot that part.
The other people have two.
And the other people would be-
Some other public members.
The other, the members of the public would be self-selected to work with that subcommittee. Okay. And that, that passed by a vote of three to two.
No, four to one.
Four to one.
All Blatts voted for it. Only Randy Haney voted no.
Okay. I apologize. I thought it was three to two. Anyway, the substitute motion passed. So neither the original motion that came from staff, nor the motion that was put forward and seconded by Councilman Blatts, neither of those was ever voted on last night.
One-
What is active now is the substitute motion, providing for, let's call it a good demo, taking up to six months to do that, and working this subcommittee. Then, at the very end of the meeting, Mayor Protem Wirick made a request, which I, I understood to be granted by the mayor to whatever level of authority he has, to as soon as possible revisit the current enforcement moratorium on blowers. Because as it stands, the motion that was passed did not touch the current ordinance, which says, "No blowers anywhere in the city," period.
No.
Right?
I, I-
In residential zones, excuse me.
Correct.
Blowers, and that's an interesting part too. The VMU runs up-
No gasoline blowers.
No gas, gas blowers.
No gas blowers anywhere in the city, but electric blowers allowed in the VMU?
And in residential zones. And gas blowers are allowed in commercial zones, right now, although enforcement suspended.
And is the VMU a commercial zone?
VMU is a mixed-use zone.
It's not a, it's not a residential zone.
It's not R. It's VMU. It's a mixed-use zone.
And so are gas blowers allowed in the VMU or not?
Yes. They are allowed in the VMU right now.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Subject, of course, to councils.
So we have this interesting situation where people that live on East Eucalyptus, if they live on the south side of East, East Eucalyptus, they're allowed to use gas blowers. If they live on the north side of Eucalyptus, they're not allowed to use gas blowers. But that's the current state of play, and there's much more to be done over the next six months.
Oh, goody. It's crazy.
End of report.
Thank you so much. I feel completely clear on the state of the state.
Well, I hope at least you weren't entertained.
I was. Well, clearly, we all were.
I watched the video.
You're, I will. You did a good job. Thank you.
The, the, the meeting was adjourned to a closed session sometime between 10:30 and 11:00.
Yes, and we got home, I got home close to midnight.
Oh.
I had to follow the whole one hour or two.
I stayed in Ventura last night, which wasn't so bad. Yeah, the closed session went in an hour, and there was no reportable action. It was a closed session performance evaluation of the city manager.
Oh, gotcha. All right. Well, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Powers, I'm sure you'll, you're booted up, and you're gonna, you're gonna have to just substitute brevity for humor.
Oh, I will. I suggest everyone go to YouTube and watch the city council meeting of February 28th of this year.
Did your phone not boot up?
That's good.
And March 14th.
Okay, I think we can do that. Okay.
No, actually, there were some highlights. So the fire chief gave an illuminating report, but mostly what was interesting, that a new fire engine was put into service. And it has a pumping pod that recirculates the water from the fire hose. So as they're using the water from the fire hose, it's sucking it back up, like it's from the street. Right?
I'm not getting turned like this.
Supping up-
It was in training situations only. It doesn't soak up water from, that's dumped on a fire. It's a training tool.
If it's all a fire, it can have to go-
Right. The water that's dumped in the fire is lost, but it-
Well, right.
It was a training tool that they have when they're using hose training, that that water is recirculated.
Oh. Well, that's not as exciting, but it's still exciting. It's still great. But there is a new fire engine that was put into service.
It has an ambulance.
Yes. And there's a, we have our own, City of Ojai has now its own-
Emergency vehicle.
The city has an ambulance available that is county-owned, not city-owned.
Oh, county-owned emergency vehicle.
Which is county-owned.
Yeah. Right. But there's an extra one now.
Yeah, exactly.
For emergency services within the city. So there'll be faster response times, although they're very fast. Okay. So as we know, this is the centennial year celebration, April 7th. There's a centennial play put on by OPAC on April 7th during the evening. It's, it was a special play script written that will reenact Edward Libby's gesture to change the name from Nordoff to Ojai, and the completion of that. And then during the day, April 8th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, there's a big event at the park that the museum is hosting. And any civic group can have a booth there. And it's like an old-timey period piece, come in costume from 1917, box lunch kind of deal.
If you have such, yeah.
A lot of the evening was the Ojai Tourism Improvement District conversation. A lot of business owners came up to speak. A lot of residents came up to speak who are not business owners. Sousa did ask an interesting question, whether the new city council, when a new city council come in, will they be locked into the vote that the current council makes regarding the OTID? I wasn't clear on the answer. It seemed like they were not, and that they could-
It's a matter of some debate that is not on tonight's agenda. Come to the next council meeting, the matter will be debated.
Thank you. Let's see what was next.
Wrap it up, Mr. Powers, please.
I'm still way under what Commissioner Quillisi, I just have longer pauses.
Remember, these people were here till midnight last night.
She could get the city council.
No, that's, I'm complete. Thank you.
Thank you. I beg you. Five minutes or less, Mr. Quillisi.
This will not near, be nearly as long nor nearly as entertaining as my report-
Oh, wow. It's a trade-off.
On the city council.
We'll suffer.
This is the BAB meeting of February 21st. Three topics were on the agenda. The Ventura County Fire Protection District Building Standards, the Second Dwelling Unit Compliance Program Extension, and election of a new BAB chair and vice chair. On the first topic, the staff had met with the, the Ventura County Fire folks, and what the BAB wound up recommending was that a minimum set of Chapter Nine changes be recommended, only those applying to Ojai City Building Standards. Because the fire chief had said, "We've already adopted ordinance, fire ordinance 29 and 30 on your behalf." And that's not strictly true, because we're a city. We're not unincorporated county. Okay. And the details of that, you can see if you want to look it up. As far as the second unit rules, there was a lot of talk about plain new construction, non-conforming, this SB 1069 that's here, if you're interested, ADUs, and, and so on. And the recommendation that was made was that the second unit compliance program be reinstated, I guess you'd say, because it expired.
March 9th.
March 9th, okay. And the recommendation to council was that it be, I'm sorry, the recommendation to council from the BAB was that the program be extended in effect indefinitely or to a date uncertain. And finally, Mr. Ulrich is the new BAB chairman, and Tom Farmer is again re-elected as the vice chairman of, of the BAB. End of report, man.
Thank you very much. And I guess, do we have a report on complete streets?
No.
Okay. Then I would like to invite Councilmember Francina up.
Thank you. I'll, I'll never complain again after seeing how hard you worked tonight. Thank you. Mayor Protem Wirick had to leave early, and he gave me strict instructions to tell you to get the ADUs done. So I will report back to him. Okay. Just, just a couple of thoughts, you know, about the, a lot of people are asking about the tiny houses. And just yesterday, my daughter sent me this gorgeous tiny house design for only $5,000. And we live in a warm climate, and if you've ever visited how Vena's tiny house, she's moving now, but if you've visited in the past, you know, if you surround a tiny house with a deck, you create this wonderful sleeping and living space. So even though, you know, your average family might not be able to live in one for, maybe as the kids grow older, a couple with a child, because you can put so many things outside in a warm, warm climate, and children like to play outside, you know, you make a playground. I wouldn't discount that a, a young family could live in a small unit like that. You know, so that, that was just on my mind. Especially the part where they only, where you can get them now for $5,000. That's very affordable. So I think, I think that's all I have to say right now, but otherwise I'll start laughing when I start thinking about everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? If not?
One, just one, one small item.
I am armed.
I see the hammer in your hand.
[laughing]
The last thing that came up at the BAB meeting does not involve just the BAB. It does not involve just the planning commission. And I think it requires city council action to execute. But there, there was an informal proposal that an ad hoc committee of the BAB and the planning commission, less than a quorum of each, get together to clarify the differences among the three different second unit programs that we have right now, the compliance program, the standard second unit program, and the ADU program. And I remain confused about the differences among those. And I think it, because it's an amalgamation of two commissions, it's a Brown Act body, but it also requires the city council to bless it.
Yes, it would require city council approval.
Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned.